Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next matter on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. And what I'd like to do is move eight G up behind the consent agenda under Roman IV, and so we can take care of that matter early in the proceedings. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and we adopt the amended agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Next is the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there anyone that wants to remove something from the consent agenda? Member Swenson?
K.
K, and that was Member Brindle as well?
Yes.
And, Member Sprague, did you have one you wanted to?
Yes, Your Honor. D E H.
D E H?
Yep.
Okay. Is that it? Member Brindle, anything else?
No, thank you.
Member Bennett?
Also D and E.
Okay, thank you. All right, with the exception of D E H and K, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a move? We've got a motion in the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Let's go to four D, which is the Resolution 2012-100 Bike Lane Designations. Member Sprague?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to move to table this item, and the reason why is I feel that we should have our bike consultant to look at the Bike Boulevard, also look at these designations to make sure we're leveraging the best practices out there. This is the first real part of our network build-out on the west side. It's going to be connecting through Seventieth Street to the New Bike Boulevard, and there are a number of difficult intersections that I think need to be looked at by a consultant that's specifically, that has been hired before to look at bike facilities. In addition, I think it would be fruitful to send this back after Alliance has looked at it for the BETF and ETC to review as well as part of our normal collaborative process. With sending this back down, I would also ask that BETF and ETC review the signage being used. One thing to note that's important for this year is, as we build out this major part of our bike network, is we want to have correct sign standards across the entire network. We've been using a Share the Road sign that was modeled off a different community, I think in Seattle, and I'm going to recommend we use the MUTCD sign, which is a yellow diamond-shaped symbol for a bike with Share the Road below it. It's very visible. It also is a universal sign used by our neighboring communities, and we have a lot of places where we segue from a bike lane to a Share the Road facility, and it needs to be very visible for the drivers. So that would be my recommendation.
All right. So you'd like time to, you'd like to table it and not have it come back to us until such time as the BETF and the ETC had an opportunity to look at it.
And also that our bike consultant, Alliance, has a chance to review this set of plans as well.
All right. Member Bennett, you had a comment on this one as well, and then I think I'll go to Director Hool and get his observations.
Thank you. I will, I will second Member Sprague's motion, and I will also say that I have had the opportunity to note that there, that state law gives us the option to create bicycle facilities either by resolution or by ordinance, and I have seen an example of an ordinance used where it is very clear you have in one place all of the different bike lanes that exist within a city, and to create a new bike lane, to designate new bike lanes, all you do is amend the ordinance. And I would recommend that we consolidate. We have had a number of resolutions in the past, and I think it's difficult for someone to find information on what was designated when, and I would pull them all together in one place, put them all in a single ordinance, and going forward, then that ordinance can simply be amended to either add or remove.
You're not attaching that to your motion, though. You're just making a recommendation in the future, and that is not attached to this particular project, though, correct?
Correct, because this, I would be seconding the motion relating to this particular project, but I would like to recommend that we look at that as another way of the uniform practice.
Rather than pass these?
Rather than pass these by resolution, let's just do an ordinance encapsulating all of the current and past designations, and perhaps any ones that haven't been designated that need to be designated, and then in the future, this would come forward as an ordinance revision.
Yes.
Okay.
Director Hool, do you have any comment with regard to this potential course of action?
No, we would be fine with what's recommended there. The only item that I probably want a little clarification is the public involvement. We mentioned the BETF and the ETC, and I imagine that, you know, we haven't hosted neighborhood meetings along these corridors, and I'd imagine that we'd want to post neighborhood meetings also, to give us some more time here. So if we're doing all these items, I would suspect that we'd be back, we'd work through the fall and the winter months to go through all these processes, and then coming out of the spring next year is to change up the striping and, you know, implement the bike lanes and all that stuff. And that way, too, then, we can budget for it also, because as we're finding out, it's costing us more than what we anticipated to grind off the markings and repaint everything.
Member Swenson?
Does the public process follow, then, like, street reconstruction? Because I see this as a little bit different than street reconstruction, but yet we're changing what people see in their front yards. Is that why you're thinking of the public process as part of this?
Yeah. What I was thinking of would be very similar to what we did on France Avenue, except not have a stakeholder group, but we invite people in so they actually could see the plans of what we're proposing and comment on the overall layout, probably more similar to the Wooddale, the Bike Boulevard plans that we did.
It comes more akin to your open house concept that you use?
Right.
And have folks there with expertise to explain things?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. All right.
Can that be done, though? I mean, you can have an open house and still get it back to us to be completed this year, or it's not?
No, it's not going to be completed this year.
It's very difficult when the temps start dropping in September and October to paint the roadways and keep the paint down the roadways.
Nick Ingsen? You're talking about using the fall for this process, and then put everything in place, and then be ready to go into spring when you can get at the project.
That's right. And part of this, as far as the signage go and the policy on the signage, I think that kind of intertwines with the living streets policy, too, so I'd like to kind of step back with that group, that working group, and say, how can we fit this into the policy that you're creating? I think it's the next step of what we're going through with the Transportation Commission, actually creating standards and policies.
My only concern, and I love any public process, but if every time we're going to paint bike lanes on a projected bike lane in the future, we probably won't have that public process. So I'd like to be really consistent with what we use for public process. So is it that we use the public process to pull together all the resolutions we already have and use it for that, and that this is part of that, but then this takes its own track through BETF and the Transportation Commission? Because that one makes sense for me for public process, because then everyone has an opportunity in the city to take a look at what's been designated, what's currently, you know, not done and might be coming up, and how it might look. So I kind of see this as two things, but I agree with you. I like your idea of public process, and that's great, but I just don't see us doing a public process every time we're going to paint bike lanes if we've already designated that as a bike route.
The intent of my original motion, actually, just, I understand that you'd like to go into next year, was really in this, when does ETC meet? This month?
In two weeks.
In two weeks. My intent is to have Alliance review these plans, have it go to ETC, and come back to us for approval, you know, by next month. I think we could still stripe this year. I don't think we need to have a public process and every time we re-stripe a street. What I do think we need is a collaborative process on the design, especially this first year, where we want to make sure that this is a major part of this network being built out between the Bike Boulevard, Tracy Avenue, and all the striping in the west. We want to make sure that it's cohesive and that we're utilizing the best practices. So I'm simply asking to take a step back, have Alliance do a quick review, an hourly review, maybe on a five-to-ten-hour basis, however long something like that might take, get their review and comment, bring it back to the ETC this month, and then back to us for final approval next month.
Member Bennett?
Our process in the past has depended on the elements, I think, of a project, and what is called for are where complications exist. I second, I do second this motion, and I, too, contemplated a more condensed timeframe. I do think with some of the changes that are contemplated, that there needs to be public information available. That's what I, I guess how I would classify it. I don't view it as a street reconstruction type of project. I do view it as one where it's important that the information be obtained, and I think both the ETC and BETF are meetings that are open to the public, and community comment is taken at those meetings. So that would be, those two meetings would be excellent places for people to get more information and give information.
And if we miss the BETF meeting, in the interest of time, as we often have on these projects, I would just go to the ETC, have Alliance do the review, go to ETC, and bring it back to us so we can get it approved and get it striped, because then by the end of this year, we'll have a major portion of the network online.
So does Director Hool think that that is a reasonable timeline if we take out the public part of it?
We could. I'm going to call on Brian Olson, actually, our Public Works Director, because his group will be doing the grinding and striping, and see if, how late he thinks that we can go into the season to do that. But, yeah, we could, we could bring it back to the ETC in August, you know, if you, you know, don't mind not having us do, invite the public, and we possibly could invite them to that meeting, get notices out that says that we're going to be reviewing these. And more, you know, I'm looking at more for education than anything else, is that as we're building out the system, we, you know, really got to explain why are we going down, why are we going down this route to add bike lanes to the city, and why are there some segments that look like they're going to nowhere right now, but they're part of an overall system? So that's what my intent of the public meetings are, informational meetings than anything else. I'm not, you know, we can, we can ask Alliance to see if they have availability, capability to review this. I'm not sure what, you know, what they're working on, if we can sneak this in, or some parts of their organization, but as far as doing the work, I...
We did go out and get quotes to get all the striping removed, and they came in higher than we expected, so we were going to try to do those with our own staff and save some money. We figured it was going to be about a four-week process from when we started to grind off all the pavement markings and then re-stripe them ourselves. So that puts us, and then if we change the signs, we do have all the Biky Dyna Task, Biky Dyna signs, Share the Road signs, there's over 200 signs that we have in inventory right now. So if we change those, it'll probably be about a two-week lag time before we can get them, but I think we can work alongside Director Hool and coordinate it so that we can get those done ahead of time.
And the signage changeover and the, and the striping could happen concurrently in the same four-week timeframe?
Yes.
Okay.
But if we're asking for input from both the consultant and from the Transportation Commission, part of that is on what sign we should use, correct?
Yeah.
So move. Question.
Yeah, I think that if we get a recommendation from you as to which one, if you're comfortable with the MUTCD Share the Road sign, those are a little bit of an advance notice necessary to get those, so I don't know if there's others that you are considering, or if that's the one you're thinking.
There's, for Share the Road, I looked in the manual. There's only, I don't have, I sent you the, so there's only one?
Yep.
Yep. And it's the same size, the same diamond shape, the same color as the pedestrian one as well, so there's some synchronicity there as well.
But it is what our neighboring communities use, so if you were biking and you were going from one community to another, the signage would be consistent? Is that what I hear?
That's what they're using now. With the new MUTCD, the manual that we're using, they've actually incorporated more of the local signage for bikeways and such. Before, when we, when we had set up the Share the Road or the Bike Route sign, that did not exist, so that's why we went to the smaller ones originally.
Okay. Member Brindle wants?
Looking at the fact that we have 200 signs in stock that could be used, would we not use any of them, or would we use those to mark the route and use the new yellow diamond to say whatever that sign says, to be consistent with other communities? Would we use both?
I think, I think what I'm hearing is no, we wouldn't, but I'm not necessarily so concerned about the signage, because that can be put up in November even. You know, it's the striping that I'm most concerned about from a timing perspective, because that's temperature relative.
Right. I'm just looking at the fact that we've got 200 signs we bought and paid for, so if we can't...
We have a, we have a sign shop. They did make the inventory, and unfortunately, we didn't, we didn't discuss sign standards because we didn't know we were going to be building out this network this quickly. And the other thing is, as Wayne mentioned, Director Hool mentioned, the MUTCD manual was updated since the signs selection was made to incorporate a lot more, a lot of other options. That's why we're coming, we're coming back to this issue now, because we're building so much this network out now. Yes, we'd have to change out some signs that are out there, and no, we can use available inventory, because that would be the wrong sign.
Okay.
But the ETC can have that discussion, and we can, we can see what they have to say as well.
Question, and then to you, is if the consultant doesn't have time to review before the Transportation Commission meeting, what timeline are we looking at? And maybe that's more Director Hool.
We, you know, I'll find out tomorrow what his timeline is, and we'll get, if it changes, we can possibly put in the Friday report that Manager Neal kicks out. So, you know, we'll have an answer by Friday, definitely by tomorrow.
Okay.
So, Mr. Olson, just to be clear, is our enthusiasm getting in the way of practicality from a seasonal standpoint?
Absolutely not. We'll accomplish it, whatever you need us to accomplish.
You're not going to be scraping this stuff off next year because it's peeled away because we did it too late?
Nope.
All right. Okay. All right. Well... Any other questions for Mr. Olson or Director Hool? Otherwise, we've got a motion to table this matter, send it to the ETC, and request ETC, BETF, Biky Dyna Task Force, for those in the audience, and Alliance review to the extent possible before it comes back to us for approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And now, Member Sprague, the next matter was four E, which is Resolution 2012-101, which was the No Parking Resolution on Antrim Road.
Yes, Your Honor, and this runs with the previous resolution in terms of subject matter, so I'm wondering if we should hold this one over as well. One thing that I wanted to include in the staff report was the left-turn data, that we talked a little bit about this today, Director Hool, just to make sure that the public understands the statistical basis for removing some of these left-turn lanes. And also to, if there's any discussion on the parking lanes themselves, before it comes back with the previous resolution.
We'll do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would move to table this as well.
All right. We've got a motion in the second to table four E to the same meeting that we have continued 2012-100 on the bike lane designation, so any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Now down to H, I think that was Member Sprague's as well, request for purchase fiber optic cabling, Utley Park to the Edina Liquor Store.
Yes, Your Honor. Okay. This was for the expansion of our fiber optic cabling network, and my one question was, is this the final leg of the connectivity that we're looking for in terms of the city? Is this the final connection at this point for the network?
Excellent question, Member Sprague. This is not the last leg, but this is the last leg that will connect city employees to it. In the future, we plan to expand to some of our warming houses and park shelter buildings, which will then allow us to put our keyless entry system on that network and reduce those costs. But this is the last of the network that will connect employees to it.
And as I understand it, there's quite a cost savings associated with having our own VoIP phone system as well. Is that correct?
There is.
Okay.
At that time, Edina Liquor's phone numbers will switch from being 612 numbers to 952 area code numbers, which will alleviate a lot of customer confusion as well.
Move the matter?
I will move this matter with that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion in the second on four H, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And next is four K, which is the Professional Park Construction Design and Construction Administration Services Agreement for Countryside Park. Member Brindle?
Thank you. My question on this one has to do with adaptive play structures. Recently, I toured Miller Park in Eden Prairie with Manager Neal and two of the Park and Rec staff, Anne Cathre and Kristin Arsvold, for the purpose of looking at adaptive play equipment that is included in that park. And I just wondered, with the opportunity to replace the play area, which is marked six in our schematic of this park in the master plan, is any adaptive equipment planned for this play area?
Congressman Brindle, at this point, I don't believe that is, as you have described the Miller Park scenario, I don't believe that that is what is anticipated in the Countryside Park master plan.
I know that when I have talked about this, what's been, what's been identified as the likely park upgrade that would include adaptive park equipment and playground equipment is at Roslyn Park, but it just seems that if we are refurbishing Countryside Park, it seems like a good time to look at it for that park as well, because it's probably a different population.
Member Swenson?
Mayor Hovland and I and city staff have a meeting with a resident tomorrow morning, actually, who is interested in fundraising for a project with adaptive play equipment, and it's not at this park. This park's master plan was a huge effort between the citizen, residents that live by this park that worked with it, and it's pretty exciting for me because it gets to be done now with the conjunction with the Waters project that's starting on the other side of Colonial Way, and it's their park dedication money that goes to getting this master plan started. We've had this master plan for a number of years as that, those residents worked on it. So I support your thoughts, Member Brindle, on adaptive, and I have just recently also been to the Miller Park, and I took a five-year-old to test it for me. But we are working to move forward with some adaptive equipment, and we have a resident really interested in doing it, but this isn't the particular park she wants to work on.
Well, I just, you know, I'm looking at the community, the community at large, because we've heard from one resident, but I'm certain that there are, there are people all over who would appreciate it in their neighborhood park.
I totally agree, and I think when we start on another master plan for another park, that would certainly be something that is always worth considering now, going forward for any master plan.
Would you, would you like to ask the Park and Rec Department, direct a question to them as to whether or not this could be retrofitted into a plan, or ask them to comment on this issue?
I would. Something as simple as taking one of the swings and making it an adaptive swing with the straps. That, that would be just one simple thing, that a person who needs an adaptive, piece of adaptive play equipment would have an opportunity to use a swing where they wouldn't otherwise, and so that would be just one example.
And that's, that's certainly something that we could and should look at with this park, because that's a scale that's small enough to fit within the existing master plan scope. I was, I was answering your question about whether we would do something of a Miller Park scope, and that's, that isn't what's been contemplated and what the residents have been involved in discussing, so. But in terms of adding that, an element of adaptability for a piece of play equipment, that's certainly possible, and we ought to do it.
And I certainly see that, and I see the level and degree to which Miller Park is adaptive as something that is focused, and it has one, maybe two sites in our city, but that there are some individual elements of adaptive play that can be distributed.
Certainly.
Thanks.
So, yeah, Member Brindle, then to just kind of summarize what you had to say or what your inquiry was about, you'd like the Park and Rec Department to look at adaptive rec possibilities to the extent feasible at Countryside Park as they go through this design process.
Yep. I don't want to change the master plan. I want to take maybe a swing or something like that to, to make that available.
Good. And we'll ask Hoysington-Coller to do that. All right. Thank you. Do you want to move this matter? Member Brindle, or does somebody else have a question?
Actually, I pulled it.
I think you both did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Member Brindle asked me before.
Right. No, I wasn't trying to...
Go ahead.
I have one request, or...
Let's go to Member Swenson first, and then we'll come back to you.
Okay.
No, I was just going to actually thank the Park and Rec Department for moving forward with this now that they've gotten funding from a direct source, and I'm very excited to see this master plan come to fruition, because when you do a master plan and then you wait, as residents who live by that park for a number of years, and they've, it's frustrating, and they get to have a hockey rink back and regrade it, and I'm pretty excited for them.
You might want to comment on that source of funds, too.
Well, the source of funds is from, whenever you do a large project on new land for us, you have to pay a park dedication fee, and the Waters senior project that's just starting in between Colonial Church and the fire station along Crossout and Tracy are the ones that paid this park dedication fee over $600,000, and that's what's allowing us to start this master plan. And so I think that's pretty exciting, that they are participating directly with the park that's right they're sitting on.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
I want to thank Member Brindle for bringing the adaptability question to the discussion tonight, and would like to ask that as we go forward with the renovations of our other playgrounds, which we do on a schedule, that we continue to look at including some adaptable features in all park renovations, so that there are some facilities in all of our neighborhood parks that can be accessed by nearby residents.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of four K say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And then we moved eight G, which is a proposed Resolution 2012-98, proposing the adoption of certain findings and a decision regarding the landscaping of property at the intersection of Valleyview Road and Sally Lane. It's a tree removal issue. We just this afternoon received a letter from the legal counsel for the homeowners at that location, and in having a brief sidebar with our city attorney, what's been recommended is that we table this matter for a closed session two weeks from tonight at our regularly scheduled council meeting that would follow our council meeting in two weeks, because we have a little bit lighter agenda and a little bit more time to discuss this in closed session, since it involves litigation. So I would entertain a, and then we will vote on it, I would think, two weeks from, or a month from now. So I'd entertain a motion to table this matter for two weeks for a closed session discussion at our next council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. I know there are folks out in the audience that were here for this matter, and I wanted to, we wanted to move it up in the agenda, the council thought it was important that you not sit here until midnight, so you can now go home and enjoy a beautiful evening, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
We don't want to sit here till midnight either.
All right. We have in the next section of the agenda a special recognition and presentation, and this involves Resolution Number 2012-105, which, appropriate to the season, honors Community Gardening Day in Edina, and that reads as follows: Whereas there are schoolyard gardens at Highlands Elementary and Concord Elementary providing community gardening opportunities to hundreds of students, teachers, staff, and residents; and whereas schoolyard gardens educate students about land stewardship, providing a classroom for children and adults to learn skills caring for the natural environment; and whereas schoolyard gardens provide a living laboratory where students engage in hands-on skill-building in math and science; and whereas schoolyard gardens allow students to see the process from growing to harvesting to preparation to mealtime, making more likely that they would continue to make healthy eating choices in the future... would continue to make healthy eating choices in the future; and whereas schoolyard gardens have taught students the value of sharing with their community by donating excess food to volunteers enlisted to assist people, Veep, and other local food shelves near the city of Edina; and whereas the city of Edina is participating in a collaboration among the cities of Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield, and Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Minnesota, to improve the overall health of our communities; and whereas there are additional community gardens located at churches and apartment buildings, bringing together and uniting congregations and senior communities in the city; and whereas community gardens build community by crossing cultural and socioeconomic divides, by providing cross-cultural and intergenerational opportunities for neighbors to meet and work together; and whereas community gardens combat inactivity, unhealthy eating habits, and social isolation, thereby reducing risk of diabetes and obesity; and whereas community gardens provide access to nutritionally rich and culturally appropriate foods that may otherwise be unavailable or new to students and residents; and whereas community gardens provide horticultural therapy and exercise, helping to draw people out of their homes and get active; and whereas community gardens provide a more livable environment in Edina and present a positive local image to the community's residents and visitors; and whereas Community Garden Day will take place in the Twin Cities metro area on August 11th, giving residents an opportunity to learn about community gardening and visit gardens in their area. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Edina recognizes the role community gardens play in making our city more livable, resilient, and healthy. Be it resolved by the City Council of Edina that we hereby declare August 11th, 2012, as Community Garden Day in the city of Edina. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second that we adopt resolution 2012-105, designating August 11th, 2012, as Community Garden Day in the city of Edina. Further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And do we have someone here to accept the resolution? Sarah, come on up. And if you want to comment at all about the Community Gardening Day, you should come on up here, and I'll hand this to you. And if you want to tell folks who you are and who you work for, go to one of the side podiums there and use the microphone, and you can talk a little bit about Community Garden Day.
Well, my name is Sarah Masowski, and I am the field director for the Dewtown campaign. And so I proudly accept this on behalf of Dewtown and the community gardens that are already existing in Edina. And as part of Community Garden Day, we hope to continue to grow the community garden network within Edina and help build a healthier community. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. Thanks for the good work you're doing on the Dewtown effort.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. You're doing a very nice job.
Thanks so much.
Thanks. All right. Now we're going to move into the public hearing portion of the agenda. And the first public hearing matter we have in front of us are the proposed France Avenue Intersection enhancements, which are embodied in resolution 2012-103. And Director Huhl has this matter.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a public hearing for our France Avenue Intersection enhancements. In the past, on our prior presentations, I've usually taken the first part of the PowerPoint, and then I hand it off to our consultant, Chuck Ricker with WSV. But tonight, in with the time that we have, I'm going to hand it over to Chuck Ricker with WSV and Associates, who has worked with us on this project from the beginning, essentially. With him, he also has Andrew Plowman, and the audience has spent a lot of time on it. And then Michael Fisher with LHB, who has, the LHB has done the urban design component of it. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Chuck Ricker to go through the presentation.
Mr. Ricker, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to quickly go through the presentation a little bit.
Would you identify yourself one more time for the record?
I'm sorry. Chuck Ricker with WSV and Associates.
Thank you.
A little bit on the project, a little bit on the background. As you know, the project started back in 2007, when the city received funding for a pedestrian bridge at 72nd Street. With some, you know, policy direction and complete streets discussions and so forth, they decided to process a scope change through the Met Council to look at, rather than the one bridge crossing, to look at some intersection improvements and enhancements to those intersections. What you see in front of you is the locations of three intersections that were proposed and ultimately approved by Met Council for improvements. The intersection of 66th Street, 70th Street, and 76th Street were included in that application. The intersection of Gallagher, the one in blue on the screen, actually is an intersection that Three Rivers is going to be completing as part of their regional trail project. Whatever we complete as part of this, you know, what the final decision here will be, you know, brought forward, and they will hopefully incorporate some of the same things in their project. As indicated, we went through the scope change process. We proposed some improvements as part of that. The improvements included, you know, widening the center median to include a 10-foot median refuge island with landscaping, with some landscaping in it. Enhancing those intersections, the three intersections, you know, by narrowing those, the existing lanes down to minimum state aid standards, you know, removing the free right turn islands, you know, to help shorten up the crossing distance for pedestrians across France Avenue and across the cross streets. Also, enhancing the corner of the intersections with some, you know, treatments and, you know, with some landscaping and things like that. So enhancing those corners, bringing all the intersections up to being ADA compliant, making sure all the pedoms are ADA compliant, and providing some pedestrian-level lighting. We also included some signal improvements, an APS system, the audible system, where the signal talks to you crossing the road for blind and impaired people to get across, countdown timers, so you can know how much time you have to get across the intersection, and some upgrades to the vehicle and pedestrian, or vehicle and bicycle detection in the intersection. Also, a part of the project was east-west connections to the existing and proposed bike facilities within the city. So we were making those east-west connections across France Avenue. And then we are providing that missing links of the sidewalk connections on the east side of France Avenue, where there are no sidewalks today. We were proposing some missing links, again, trying to stay within that existing right-of-way as part of that scope change that we were proposing. And then providing better accessibility of transit. You know, there's an existing transit stop there right, you know, around Gallagher, 72nd and that area, you know, that has very difficult access. Right now, we were going to improve that access. And then providing all this within minimal right-of-way, you know, maybe at the intersections is all we were looking at. We did a cost estimate. Again, you know, that cost estimate was based on some aerial mapping. We hadn't done any detailed survey at that time. We came up with a typical intersection improvement cost, used that. Again, minimal landscaping and minimal urban design-type improvements. And then we were assuming no right-of-way at that time. What we ended up with that cost, you know, with all those things included, was a little over $2 million, $2,045,000 for those costs. We did get that approved through the Met Council. So the Met Council approved this project as the scope change. Once we got that approved, we did a detailed survey, got a little bit more information. We've, since that time, reworked those costs to determine what they would be, you know, with that scope change improvements. What you see on the screen here shows a little bit more of a breakdown of the intersection costs and the sidewalk connection costs. Again, we determined, once we got into the survey and so forth, that we did need some right-of-way that we weren't expecting, so that cost went up. The actual construction cost went down a little bit due to, you know, a little, looking at it a little closer. And then the landscaping stayed about the same as what it was in that cost. So we were at $2.3 million with those costs. Since that time, since we went through the scope change and those approvals, beginning of May is where we came to the council. You authorized us to move forward on this project. You know, you asked us to look at the urban design features. You know, we wanted to ensure that the corridor was, you know, even though we're just looking at three intersections, to make sure that it fit in those three intersections, that we could use those same configurations at other intersections in the future. And then to get input from stakeholders and to try and, you know, get input from other people. We then moved forward with some stakeholder meetings. End of May, we had our first stakeholder meeting, where we reviewed the different design elements. We brought forward some typical designs, got their input, you know, talked about the corridors in detail, you know, what they wanted to see or what they thought should be included. The second meeting, you know, the end of June, then, we came forward with three different options. The first option had an actual bike lane on France Avenue, along with all the other elements. It was actually a separated bike lane with boulevards. You know, the second option actually still had a bike lane on France Avenue, but with no boulevards. And then the third option, we had an on-road bike lane, again, but with just the sidewalk connections that were originally proposed. We then looked at different options for the corridor connections. We went through all this analysis. We went through it with the stakeholders. And actually, the consensus at that time was with option one. And we went forward to a special ETC meeting, you know, to discuss this. The problem that we ran into then was the cost. We ended up, the cost was extremely high, a little over $9 million for that option. So that was a large concern of the ETC. They made some recommendations to go back to option three, remove the bike lanes on France Avenue, you know, and provide for a boulevard, and still provide for those east-west connections. We then had a second ETC meeting, where we reviewed those revisions. They still were a little concerned with those high costs. They were at a little under $5 million. And they, then they recommended to move forward to the city council, you know, the option that's in front of you tonight, with some right-of-way options for reducing costs and some other options for reducing costs. Earlier this evening, we reviewed what the ETC had proposed. We discussed the different elements of the cost, talked about some right-of-way options and some design options, using some of the existing sidewalks and, you know, the Macy's, Byerly's, you know, area, you know, just using the existing, or putting that sidewalk in front of the wall that exists today, removing some of those costs, removing and/or reducing some of the urban design features, and then adding some striping for southbound, southbound France Avenue that wasn't originally included. Again, here's the typical section that we're moving forward with, with option three. Again, the reducing those lanes, providing that center 10-foot median with an eight-foot boulevard, landscape boulevard on the east side and an eight-foot sidewalk. The bottom typical section shows what the side streets would look like. Again, very similar, except we went down to a little narrower boulevard on the side streets to help reduce that right-of-way cost. So we were down to a six-foot landscape boulevard on some of those side streets, where we have that available. This shows the layout again, that shows the intersections and the entire length. You can see the, what's in yellow are the improvements that would happen at the intersections. You can somewhat see the, you know, on the northbound lanes, where we would restripe. And we're proposing now to restripe the southbound also. But right now, this option actually shows just that northbound restriping. And it shows the sidewalk and so forth on top of the, with the boulevard, you know, in front of Byerly's and Macy's in this section. Again, moving down to 70th Street, continuing the boulevard and sidewalk through that area and into that intersection. Again, providing some improvements to that intersection. All these have a bike, either boulevard or, excuse me, bike lane or share the road lane on the side streets for bikes, you know, for the east-west connections. And again, moving down through 76th Street, where you can see we make the connection there, you know, to, and to the north. A little bit more detail, and again, these were all in the feasibility report. You know, at 66th Street, we'd provide those, you know, a bike lane, you know, east and west. You can see the brown, the brown line through the intersection. And we would make connections to future bike lanes or online bike lanes on 66th Street, where we'd make those connections for future. 70th Street, we would, again, this would be a share of the road type facility with a roundabout at, on either side of this intersection, roundabouts. We would have a share of the road, you know, with a designated lane on the one along the, approaching the intersection. You can see that in brown. But then we would have share of the road to those roundabouts. And then at 76th Street, you can see the same thing, where we'd have, you know, provide future connections on 76th Street for future bike lanes to the west, and then, excuse me, to the east, and then to the, I was right, to the west, and then to the east, we would just connect into the existing roadway, and there'd be share of the road from that point over. This just shows a little bit of a blow up of the corner, where we can see some of the improvements. And you can see where that existing right-of-way line is around the corner, which is in red. The gray is a sidewalk, and the green shows the landscaping areas that we'd provide. These next few slides just kind of show some of the urban design features that we would be including with the trees and some of the different possibilities for monuments and so forth. I'm going to just quickly go through some of these. But it shows some options that, you know, could work through this intersection. If you have any specific questions on these, Michael Fisher can answer those questions. Again, they're just showing some options that we would look at at those intersections. Again, this cost ended up at about $5.8 million, with all the features that you saw through that presentation right there. This shows a comparison, looking at the scope change alternatives up through option three, and including option one, which was just over $9 million, and how those construction costs, you know, raised. And with option three, we're a little over $2.3 million for the actual construction. And it shows where the right-of-way and urban design and landscaping costs are, you know, fairly significant pieces of option three. To our meeting earlier tonight, where we talked about some of the recommendations for reducing that cost, how we get that cost down a little bit, what we discussed at that meeting was removing the boulevard at the Macy's Byerly site, and, you know, moving that sidewalk down to in front of the existing wall. We had saved about $350,000 in right-of-way costs and about $50,000 in construction costs. Removing that urban design monument feature, you know, that's about $450,000. Then the next three items are right-of-way items, where we agreed that negotiating those right-of-way would be a good thing. So we'd look at negotiating those right-of-ways with those folks. And then we also added, we talked about adding some southbound striping to include those narrowed striping lanes for that through traffic on southbound France Avenue as well. And that, we said about $30,000. What that comes up to is just under $4 million, you know, so that total revised cost with those subtractions and one addition would be about $4 million. So that's where our cost is at this time. Again, the funding, the federal money that we have for this project, we received $1 million. They provide us with a little bit of an inflation, you know, for the year that we've got the money. So we actually have $1,090,000 in that. The city had allocated $1 million in TIF originally on this project. And there's some possible other funding sources that we've been looking at. The Hennepin County Public Works has a landscaping and urban design that they're going to be coming out with. It's a competitive process that will be coming out here in the fall, that we would propose us to move forward, trying to get those funds. You know, it was brought up at our meeting, that Hennepin County Community Works has some funding that potentially could go for this. We'll explore those things, negotiating those right-of-way costs. And then any of the, any of the costs that would be over and above that $4 million would be proposed to be special assessed through this process. So that's yet to be determined, what that would actually be. But that's what we would propose at this time. Again, the schedule, from that first end of May stakeholders meeting to tonight, we've had several meetings. Hennepin County, Metro Transit, or a couple other meetings that we held along the way, you know, talking to them about different aspects of the project. And then the schedule. The bottom line is, is we need to have this approved and ready for bidding. The bottom line is, is we need to have this approved and ready for bidding by March 31st of next year. So we're on a pretty tight schedule. The, um, right-of-way acquisition is probably the critical timeframe here. Getting that going by the beginning of September is, is the critical aspect of this, uh, schedule at this point. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Mr. Rickert, you might explain why it's important that we, uh, meet that March 31st deadline?
Good question, Mayor. The reason why we have to meet that first, first, uh, that, that March 31st deadline is the scope change and sunset date that we requested from the council, we, we got an extension of the funding for one year. And we need to have that funding, you know, or the, the project completed, ready to go in that one-year period. Originally, the funding was for the fiscal year 2012 and now we're into the fiscal year 2013. So we have to have that, um, funding completed by March 31st.
All right, thank you. Members, break.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, first, uh, series of questions is on scope. And, uh, as I understand it, the stakeholder meetings was part of what led to a broader scope and a higher cost, um, because we asked those stakeholders to broadly envision what this corridor could be like and not, not paying attention as much to the funding aspect more of a, from a visionary perspective. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, and the, the current, the option three that's been recommended by the Transportation Commission had 5.8 without the deductions. Is it fair to say that the difference between that and the original application was that we've, um, we have a more robust corridor design than we did originally?
That, that is correct. Uh, the, the biggest part of it is we added that boulevard. We added that eight-foot boulevard and eight-foot sidewalk. Originally, we were fitting a six-foot sidewalk right behind the curb without a boulevard. So that's what really increased the cost. We, we increased the landscaping and the urban design elements. A lot more of that was included also.
So in addition to beautification, the wider boulevard, does that afford us any stormwater management?
Yes, that, that will also include, um, the bioswales, you know, so it will be a, a ditch section that will include bioswales within that, uh, eight-foot boulevard.
And in your experience, a wider boulevard, how does that impact the pedestrian? Keeping in mind that that was really the chief motive for, for going down this road in the beginning is to try to improve the experience for the pedestrian?
Yeah, that, it, it provides a safer, you know, a safer pedestrian experience. You're away from the traffic. You've got that, that buffer between you and the traffic. You've got, you know, the eight-foot, you know, boulevard as well as the, the landscaping and trees along the, along the corridor also. So it's a much safer environment for, for the pedestrians to be in.
And in terms of transit stops, I know that there's one, um, just south of Hazleton on Seventieth. Has, has there been any consideration of, of moving that with this project or relocating it somewhere?
Yeah, the one, uh, the one transit stop that is, was their biggest concern, we are talking to them and we'll, as we go through the design, we'll continue to talk to them exactly where it's going to be located. But they actually did talk about it, moving it around the corner onto Hazleton.
Okay. And in terms of the signal timing, um, we have included a feature, Hennepin County wasn't, wasn't, um, completely happy about, but we feel that it's good for the pedestrian. Can you talk about that median, um, signal change and how that works?
Yeah, as part of the, as part of the signal construction, we will, we will be proposing to put a push-button station in the center, in the median, in the refuge island. So if someone would get caught in the middle, they would have a way to push the, you know, the button to be detected to, to cross the roadway. The goal is to have, to be able to cross completely, you know, across the roadway and that, and the timing will be set up to do that. But if someone got caught in there, you know, we would have that, uh, refuge and that push buttons for them to push.
Or if they were less than able-bodied and didn't move as quickly. And in terms of, uh, we, I know we talked about, um, a leading pedestrian indicator, how, whatever the terminology is, basically, um, extending the, the signal in advance of the car starting so that pedestrians get a head start. Is that included in this design?
Yeah, the, the timing will be, will be worked through with the county, you know, but that's one thing we did talk to the county about is to having a, a pedestrian leading phase. So the pedestrians would lead, you know, they would have a little bit more of a time to cross the road.
And that's from detection devices installed at each side of the?
Yes, there, there will be detection for the pedestrians and the bicycles through, you know, for the east-west connections for the bicycles. But, and there will be pedestrian detections either through video or push buttons, you know, we, we haven't got the details of that done with, with the county. But then that will indicate, you know, in the controller cabinet, the controller of the, of the signal, how much time, where that phasing starts and so forth, so.
And in addition to the facilities improvements, we're also doing traffic calming basically on, on this portion of France. So on the northbound lanes, originally we had already had that as part of the design. Tell me about what we'll be doing in the southbound lanes.
Originally, in the southbound lanes, we were providing just narrowing, again, similar to the, the northbound at the intersections to provide to that minimum state aid standard, 11-foot lanes for the through lanes and so forth. With the, with the discussion we had earlier, we are now going to re-stripe the, the entire southbound roadway to those narrower lanes and provide whatever's left over. We're not going to reconstruct that curb line on the outside on the west side, but we will, you know, there will be a little bit of a shoulder left, you know, that would be striped along that corridor.
Okay. And then along with this, of course, with the urban design, not the monumentation that has been discussed to, to do as a possible phase two, but we're doing, we're doing trees, we're doing, uh, landscaping extensively both at the intersections and along the corridor, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Member Prindell?
Thank you. Couple of things and, and, um, and this is really clarification of some of the things we talked about earlier. Um, and that is removable, removal of the free rights. I understand that makes the intersections narrower and reduces crossing time and I understand the benefit of that. But that still does allow a car to stop at a red light and if it's safe to proceed on a red light, on a right turn.
Yes, there, there will be a right on red, yes.
Okay. Uh, second, uh, just to go a little further on the trees, uh, the trees are along both sides of France and as well down the center of France. Will there be some low growth? I mean, I, just in the, just in the, in the schematic, it looked like some low-growth shrubbery as well as deciduous trees?
There will be, the deciduous trees were on private property in those, those pictures. So those were, those weren't a part of it, but the lower growth stuff would be in the, in the trees, you know, it, within the intersections. Now for northbound, it would be along the entire corridor wherever we have a boulevard. Southbound, it would just be at the intersections.
Okay.
We would not have it for the entire corridor southbound.
Okay, and those are planted in that depressed bioswale area?
Yes.
Okay. And they would be planted, looking at the health of the trees and just to make sure people know this, that they would be planted in an engineered soil that is, that is made specifically for this type of environment and that irrigation would be provided as part of this project as well?
That is correct.
Okay, good. All right, number three, um, the refuse, there, there is a refuge island here and there along France Avenue. I don't think these islands are really meant to be refuge islands because they're not very big. For instance, uh, there was a woman, uh, waiting at one the other day when I was there and there, I don't know that you could get more than two people on that island. How big will these be?
They'll be 10 feet wide and I guess, I'm not sure, I can't remember if it's 20 feet, you know, you know, deep, you know, but they'll be a, a depth to them also.
Great.
20 feet wide.
All right.
Or 10 feet wide, excuse me.
Okay. And then my last question is looking at particularly the east side of France, uh, where we have these intersections and others, not all of them have marked crosswalks. And I totally understand that when you're walking on a walklight, um, you have an implied crosswalk, if you will, if it's not marked, but I'd really like to see a crosswalk there. Just it emphasizes the drive, to the drivers where the right-of-way begins and therefore where their stop line should be. And so without that, the cars can creep into the area the pedestrians need to be in. So I guess I would encourage those crosswalks to be marked.
Uh, we are proposing for the northbound, you know, any street we cross, we will have marked crosswalks.
Any street, not just the three?
Any street. Because we're, what we'll end up doing through that, where we're adding sidewalk through there, we have to put pedestrian, you know, ADA, you know, ramps at those intersections. So where those ramps are, we'll connect them with, uh, um, uh, crosswalks also.
Great, thank you very much.
Number Swenson?
Well, I was going to suggest a resolution unless member Bennett had a question or something that you wanted to raise beforehand? Okay. Um, I would move for, oh, never mind, we have a public hearing. I'll wait and hold my remarks.
Thank you. Member Bennett, anything right now for Mr. Rickert?
If this question was asked, I apologize, the markings in the crosswalks, I understand that we'll, there'll be vast improvement in terms of having those crosswalks marked. I note that there was some discussion at the ETC about the types of markings that would be used. And can you tell me what has been, what's being recommended?
You know, we haven't got into, you know, there, there's a variety of things we can look at. We're, we're working with the Durotherm Company, you know, who the ones that have done some of the markings at, you know, on Seventieth Street and so forth, the, the brick pattern. The, the tough thing that we're going to be working with here is concrete, you know, it's, you know, and, and trying to get that Durotherm to work on concrete. So we're working with them to see if we can do something. You know, I know Andy's been talking to them quite a bit. You know, the other option is, you know, the, the regular block crosswalks, you know, obviously we could do that or, or paint something, you know, a little different, uh, with epoxy and so forth. So, you know, we are looking at different options, but, you know, it's, you know, it's something we'll work through, through the design process.
I did note that in the discussion, there was some recommendation, um, by an ETC member or stakeholder that the zebra striping be examined. And my experience as a, um, daily pedestrian and someone who both walks and drives in the evening, the bricks are wonderful, they're not really very visible at night and the, the zebra striping is really visible. Um, it may not be the most subtle, uh, but I don't know that we want a crosswalk marking to be subtle and so I would really urge that there be consideration of something that has that visibility both during the day and during the evening.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rickert, a couple of questions. This is a county road and I'm concerned about the, uh, the level of input, of course, from the county since it's their road. And on, on page eight of 45 of your report, you talk a little bit about, uh, Hennepin County. I just want to make sure I understand some of the concerns properly that they've raised. One of the first ones was that they, uh, they said raised planters slash curbs along the median curb or in the boulevard. I take that those are important to them because of the fact that vehicles could leave the roadway or were they actually touting the opposite that they didn't want them?
The opposite, they did not want them.
They do not want them?
They don't, they don't want anything raised, you know, next to the roadway.
So, so, uh, why is it a better safety issue for vehicles leaving the roadway to go through a boulevard and into the oncoming lane of traffic than it is to run into a planter?
They were talking more on the outside, you know, on the, on the, um, not on the, the median side.
Not on the median side, but on the, uh?
Yeah, on the outside.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the median side, you know, they'll, they're going to allow us to, you know, we're going to have it, it'll be slightly bermed, you know, on the median side so that it'll come up a little bit. It's not going to be, they don't, they just don't want that sheer wall coming straight up and down at, you know, either on the median or on the outside because they feel that is, uh, a safety hazard. They've had some issues at some other locations with it.
All right. I mean, it's hard to understand really on balance that it's, uh, it, it's more unsafe than safe, but nonetheless, um, uh, I think I'm going to get Mr. Fisher up here and have him comment on some of the urban design elements and some of the county's concerns. But, you know, I think for all of us on the council, one of the things that when we re-sculpt this, we requested that it be re-sculpted at the Met Council at the TAB. Uh, one of the things that we thought would be terrific would be in that process of having three interchanges that people would actually use to get across the street instead of funneling themselves down from four or five blocks away to go over a bridge, was that people that live in the apartments on the west side of, of our, of France Avenue, particularly down towards Centennial Lakes, uh, and they're pushing kids and, and they've got, uh, they've got a grandmother with them, uh, I don't know if it would matter how long the light was or if the drivers on France Avenue would have the patience for it to, to let them have a total cycle to get everybody across the street. And that's what we've worried about because we've seen it firsthand. And I think many people in this room have probably seen people trying to get across France Avenue down there by Centennial Lakes. So we thought these safe landing pads were a good idea. And then as Member Sprague said in our work session, you know, what's wrong with, once you get to the landing pad, being able to push the button, and Member Bennett brought it up too, and be able to then not change the sequence of the lighting, but, but give yourself a chance that when the lights change, you get across the second half of the street. So some of these concerns about the county are really quite perplexing to me. And, uh, I guess I'd like to visit with them a little bit more about some of those concerns so I understand them better, number one. Number two, uh, we're, we're all concerned about, uh, the opportunity here on a street like France Avenue. Is it an A minor arterial?
Yes, it is.
It's an A minor arterial. I mean, the chance, the chance to show the region what you can do in terms of functionality and beautification on an A minor arterial is right in front of us here. I mean, we could, we can show people all over the metro what you can do with a street like this. And I don't feel like we're getting enough buy-in from the county whose road it is. So to me, that's something that we need to be working on. And also I think the adjoining property owners, I, I think there's a, a real case to be made that they ought to be donating that, that land, that small amount of land that we want to, to beautify France Avenue to make it a better shopping district for many of these, uh, these businesses that are along the street. So, I mean, that's just a little bit of, uh, editorializing up here, but, uh, I, I, I want to, I want to try to figure out, you know, who do we talk to at the county? I know you, you've talked to Jim Groob down there, but, uh, I mean, beyond that, I think we need to, we need to have some serious conversation with folks about, let's see some, let's see some actual monetary contribution from, uh, Hennepin County on this road that, that we want to improve not only for them, but for us and our residents and everybody else that comes into that part of Edina to shop.
The, the county was actually involved in all the stakeholder meetings too. Tom Johnson was at all those meetings. So he, he was aware, I mean, he's been there and he's been through all those discussions also. Um, and then we met with the entire staff. I, we had like, you know, eight or nine of the staff members there when we met with them the one day. So we didn't talk about funding, you know, we didn't talk about any of that. We were talking more of the design elements at that point.
All right. Mr. Fisher, could you come up for a minute, please? I'm going to ask you a few questions about, uh, I guess both from an urban design standpoint, uh, your observations on, on, uh, this amended plan, option three, and relative to its functionality and its beautification, are we, are we optimizing our chances here with, I mean, I, we can't, this is still a lot of money that we're talking about. And, uh, I want to get your professional observations and as, I guess as a resident as well, and, and whether, as a professional and a resident, you're going to be satisfied with the end result if we go this route?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Why don't you identify yourself again, too?
My name's Michael Fisher. I'm 4512 Dunham Drive.
And, but you work for?
And we're, we're, we were brought on, uh, I think it was after your May meeting to consult on the urban design aspects. And I just want to take one step back before I directly answer your question, uh, because sometimes we use the term urban design and tie it to elements like a, a monument on the street. And urban design is really much more than that. I would almost characterize those elements as landscape features. So when we looked at the urban design, what we're looking at is the entire corridor and everything around the corridor, the, the total context. And one thing that hasn't been talked about a lot here tonight because we're trying to keep the presentation abbreviated is for this to work, uh, if you step way back to where you're talking about a bridge over the street, it was really a way for community members to get into this district in a safe way. And I think it was a good decision that was made to say, how can we, how can we make that more uniformly safe along this corridor? So we looked at, you know, we can spend all of this money today and if we don't continue the effort to make sure that every property owner along this corridor makes efforts to connect to the corridor, it's sort of a lost cause anyway. So this is really a bigger picture thing. So if you think about every time we have a PUD discussion or a, a proposal that comes before us as a city, that we make sure that those property owners are connecting to whatever we have here. So that was part of the, the bigger picture we were looking at. And then when you say, then, then, then as we looked at the corridor, if we can get people to the corridor, now we have to move them along the corridor. And that's where the boulevard discussion came in. So that's a really important feature here, that eight feet. And of course, if we could have 10 or 12, that would be great. have ten or twelve, that would be great, but, but it's all about what's realistic too. So I would characterize this entire discussion as a short-term project in that, to meet the deadlines and to use this federal grant money, we have to make decisions that we can afford today, but we want to make sure that we're setting the stage, and I would think of this as setting the stage for France Avenue for a bigger vision for tomorrow. We're not going to accomplish all of it with the money that's, whatever amount of money you decide to spend here tonight, isn't going to do all of France Avenue, but if we can set the stage, then we're doing the right thing. So what we're trying to look at from the urban design perspective, is to make sure we're allowing for that median, we're allowing for those boulevards, and we're allowing for the future elements to come in, whether it's monuments, or better pedestrian lighting, or more trees, or better plantings, we can do that incrementally over time. This project's getting that first phase done, you know, making sure that linkage happens. And so I think where we're evolving to this option three is the right place to be, as long as, you know, and because it's not precluding those things from happening, it's setting the stage at a very responsible financial level. No, I probably didn't answer exactly what you're asking.
Oh, that was very helpful. Yeah, very helpful. Other questions for Mr. Fisher, or?
So what I hear you saying is, to make a choice that doesn't preclude a phased approach to this over time, so this is phase one of, of many different phases, and also, that we set a clear vision and expectation for future landowners that choose to improve their property, so that they can know what will be expected in the rebuild or the reconstruction.
Absolutely, if you think about it as a partnership, which I know you have, this idea of, let's not, I think the team did the right thing, budgeting the money that it would take, if you had to buy right-of-way to do this, it's very expensive, but if we think of this as a partnership, and work with the property owners as part of this partnership, and figure out a way to make, whether it's easements, or, you know, negotiations in a property development, whatever, I think we can, we can get this done over a period of years. And if you think about, this public investment upfront has to set the tone, so if you pick these three intersections, for example, and do it right at the intersection, and show what you're trying to achieve, all that stuff in between will fill in. It may take a little while, but we'll get there.
Yeah, great point, I was thinking this too, was a great opportunity for a public-private partnership to improve France Avenue and, and, and improve connectivity into the district for people trying to get there. Member Bendel.
Just one thing to, to continue on the word lighting, it is a question I meant to ask for clarification, the lighting that's going to be included with the, in the medians along, in the, in the median and along the sides, is there lighting as part of the landscaping?
Okay, you had to stump me now here, didn't you? I'm kind of the big-picture guy.
Sorry.
There will not be lighting in the median, I mean, there'll be lighting along the, along the boulevards, and it's the, and we put a picture in the, in the feasibility report of the, what we propose at this point is the light goes along, I believe, sixty-ninth, sixty-sixth, with the E, you know, look on it, so that's what we propose at this time.
Okay, thank you.
I had another question for Mr. Fisher, and that deals with the medians, and the landscaping in the medians, are you satisfied with the plan in terms of, maybe it's your plan, but the, the level of landscaping in the medians, because it seems to me like, whether it's France, or later it's York, there's great opportunity to beautify France Avenue and York Avenue with those wide medians that now are just a home for quack and crabgrass.
Right, the, you know, our landscape architects would always argue for a little bit more space, but the, that was mentioned, the engineered soil and the irrigation are two really key components, so you can grow trees, for example, in the dimensions that are being shown, as long as you have the right engineered soil and you're irrigating and all of that sort of thing, so, yes, it can be done. Could, could it be done easier and better with more space? Yes, but you all know the cost of that, I mean, it's, we're sort of working in this world of, there's the ideal world, and then there's the world we live in, and we're trying to find that, that middle ground that, that will work.
But in that real world, you're, are you satisfied with the landscape plan that's, that's part of this modified option three?
Yes.
For the medians? Okay. Yeah, that's important for us, because we, we trust you, so, we rely on you, thank you. Other questions for anybody from staff? Member Bennett?
I do have a question for Mr. Rickert, sorry, Mr. Fisher, but, well, it is about the raised elements. I too had the reaction that the mayor did to that comment, I, I saw that they had commented on it, but it wasn't clear from the report in which direction, and I shared the mayor, and I think we all have this concern, that an environment be created in which all of the travelers in the area, where they're, they are in vehicles, on foot or on bicycles, feel safe, they feel comfortable, and they can get to their destinations. But pedestrian, there is some separation that we're bringing in with the boulevard, I think that's a very good thing, the plantings that we're contemplating are good, the medians are good. I do think that some raised elements are really beneficial, probably for the same reason that it appears that Hennepin County doesn't think they're beneficial, because if they're concerned that a motorist leaving the roadway is going to strike something, I don't want that something to be a pedestrian. And I don't need to see so much raised stuff in the median, except on those, in those havens, where we're hoping that pedestrians will feel safe if they are waiting out a light, if they're not making that crossing within one light. I especially think it's important that they feel safe when they are waiting for the light to change, and they're swan the corners, and then also when they are traveling on the sidewalk between corners. And I guess I would like to see us pursue that conversation with Hennepin County and really reach a point where we have the elements that we think are important to include.
Let me, if I could clarify what the county had actually stated, when we spoke with the county about some of the urban, or the, the design and landscape elements that, that we were looking at, one of the thoughts were is to put a raised median, so it would, so we basically put a planters in the median, and that's, that's where they, they really didn't want to go that route, because they had issues, or there was, has been issues down on Third Avenue, right by City Hall in Minneapolis, they actually had a fatality where a vehicle hit the median for some reason, I'm not sure why, and how that, that actually happened, so they, they said, we really don't want a raised planter in the median, especially if you don't have, on a typical curb and gutter, you have a two-foot clearance, a clear zone, from the face of the curb to the, to where you're putting something in, and they, on those particular ones, they're right up against the, the back of the curb, so they didn't have that two-foot clear zone, and so that, that's why, one reason why they didn't object it to doing anything raised in the medians, that's really abrupt like that. In the boulevard areas, I, we never really heard from them as far as putting raised planters, especially if you're coming in with six to eight feet, and then putting some other, something, something types that's raised, or even on the, the other item that, that they, they wanted to make sure is that we didn't have the pedestrian crossings right on the midpoint of the radiuses, because there's been issues in other municipalities, actually fatalities of, of buses, the rear wheels are going up and over the, the radius, so we were really, I'm saying that we didn't design the project that would have anybody waiting on the radius of, of the intersection, so. So I think, I think, given those, I think it gives us a lot of latitude to design something really nice on the corners that could be raised and give it some, some protection of the other pedestrians.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, what you, you know, what you did, or what you recommended, and what you did between France and York on Seventieth, by the Galleria with those roundabouts, and the landscaping is in there, I think is fantastic. It's, it's changed that into a neighborhood from just a, a former thoroughfare with no beauty to it at all, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to see, I want to make sure we see that same sort of outcome on France Avenue too.
That's what I visualize on this too, because that was a partnership between the major property owners and the city to, to, to come to that outcome.
Mayor, you're, you're talking about creating a sense of place.
Yeah, indeed.
Yep.
And I think, Mr. Fisher said it well, you want to make sure that you lay in the public realm space in a way where it really generates a lot of private activity around it, and people care about the neighborhood they live in, they're going to fix up their properties and, and do something that's consistent with the public realm space, so we're seeing that now on the promenade, I think, with a potential project from Viarley, so. All right, this is a public hearing, and I'm going to open this matter up now as a public hearing, and invite anyone to come forward that wishes to testify regarding this potential matter, and come on up, use one of the side podiums, unless you have an overhead, and then we'll give you a handheld microphone, and make sure you give us your name and address, and then also, you'll get the timers, you'll have three minutes, and when the yellow light goes on, you got thirty seconds, and please wrap up, because we're pretty careful about how time is shared here. Welcome. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, the green light didn't go on yet, but anyway.
Yeah.
Barbara Raffedall, seventy-one, twenty-five, Bristol Boulevard. I apologize to council if I missed in the presentation, but my only concern, I have only question is, is traffic, which has been the issue since I moved in over thirty-five years ago. Is Seventieth in France, is it going to, is it going to speed up and go more smoothly? Slow it down more than it is now, or stay about the same? That's my only question I have to you, because that's been the issue we've been fighting there for over, over forty years.
Okay, so would you, would you restate the question once more?
Preface, the question was, what in your opinion is going to happen to the traffic? Either it's going to flow faster, more smoothly through the intersection, it's going to slow it down, plug up Seventieth more, or it's going to stay about the same?
Okay, good, thank you. We'll gather all these questions up, and we'll go through them with staff when we get done. All right. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Scott Solberg, forty-two oh one, West Sixty-Sixth Street. So I just ask that you might consider as part of this project, or maybe a separate effort by Wayne and his staff, those of us in the Cornelia area to get over to the Southdale area, we have a nice sidewalk on the south side of sixty-six between Cornelia and Southdale Road, and then from Southdale Road to Valley View Road, but then there's a gap, so speaking of missing links and connectivity, there's a gap there with no sidewalk between Fran, Valley View and France, and there is a pedestrian crossing across France at that point. So, I didn't see it in the plans that were presented here, and I don't know if it could be worked into these plans or separate effort, and I, Wayne, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Sixty-Sixth Street, I believe, is a state aid road, you know, maybe it could be done with little or no funding from the city itself, but I think it would just add some connectivity. So those of us to walk to Southdale on a sidewalk, we go north across Sixty-Sixth Street, take the sidewalk over across France, and then head south across Sixty-Sixth Street to get to Southdale. And there is a sidewalk on the west side of France as well, so it could connect into that nicely, but whether it's part of this project or not, it seems like it should be designed so it could be connected if it were going to happen. So I just ask you to consider that.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Fulberg.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Kitty O'Day, forty-six ten, Bruce. I was in Denver this weekend, and something they're doing, which I think is really innovative, I know it's probably something for the county or Met Council to consider, but they have created a law that you're in violation if any part of your car breaks the line of the crosswalk, and I didn't realize that, and I couldn't figure out like why all the cars were behind me, coming up to intersections, and it's really been effective in terms of creating a safer environment for people to walk across the street, to know, they're teaching people and reinforcing with tickets to stay out of the crosswalk, so I wanted to share that.
All right. Thanks, Ms. O'Day. Anyone else? All right.
Public hearing?
Move in a second, and we close the public hearing, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay? Carry. We've got a couple of questions, first from Mr. Raffedall, wondering, at the intersections that were proposed for reconstruction, can we expect traffic speeds to increase, decrease, or remain about the same? Do we have any sense of that, Mr. Rickert?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we, we did do a traffic study and put the, the traffic numbers in the model, our goal is to keep it the same, you know, our, we want to be able to provide the same level of service on, on France Avenue that exists today, but provide that additional crossing for, for the paths, so, you know, it's, it's going to stay about the same as what our, our plan is, is what, what our numbers show.
Member Swenson.
I think the other part of his question is, will it also affect the backup on Seventieth Street, waiting to go out for the light, because I heard that also.
No, it's not going to make it any, any worse than it is today, and we're not going to change, we're not adding lanes, we're not adding capacity, if, if anything, it would help, it'll help it a little bit, because we are going to provide a little bit more time for the pedestrians to cross, so it may help that time a little bit for traffic crossing Seventieth Street, or crossing Sixty-Sixth or Seventy-Sixth.
Stand by here, we had, the next question is from Mr. Fulberg, and this might be more appropriate for Director Houle, but, Mr. Fulberg pointed out there was a missing link of sidewalk, Valley View to France, would that be part of, or potentially part of the project that we're talking about here?
Mr. Mayor and council, that would not be a part of the, part of the, the project as it sits today, however, there's a couple other items that are on the agenda that's going to hopefully generate some funding for sidewalks and such, and that, that could be looked at when we're looking at the missing gaps in the city and, and adding on sidewalks throughout the city itself.
Okay. Member Bendel?
I guess I'd like to know whether the missing link of sidewalk that he's referring to connects to France?
It, it, yes, it does.
Because if it does, couldn't it be considered part of this project? Because it gets people across France.
It, it does get people across France, they do have a, a route, and I'm looking at a map here, on Valley View Road to go north, and on the north side, we'd have to look at it and see if, what that would do to the signal at Valley View Road, because we're in the same issues where we have a free right going northbound on Valley View Right to Sixty-Sixth Street, so I'm not sure if we're, you know, adding a sidewalk, if we're now creating the same thing that we're correcting on France. So like, the Valley View Road, the, that's, you know, when we, when we were doing the bike boulevard project, that was the phase two of our bike boulevard project, and, and I actually have a proposal to look at that from a traffic point of view, to do the phase two portion, and that, that's what I'd look at, is to analyze that, to see how that would fit in. If we can do it easily, then, then I would probably come back with a separate project, rather than lump this into the federal project where the federal folks are looking, reviewing it, and come back with another project at a, at a later date, possibly through the winter months, that, I'm not saying that it wouldn't be built in 2013, but let's take, take a step back and look at, see how that would work and what, what the cost would be when we, when we're at Valley View Road and West Sixty-Sixth Street.
And I think that's what Mr. Fulberg was asking, just take a look at it, see if it makes some sense, and if possible, let's get that done in some way, so.
Yep.
And I think your approach is a logical, that's all. All right, any other questions, council? All right. We had a work session on this before our regular meeting, and Member Swenson was leading that discussion, and there is a resolution that adopts option three, but there was a discussion upstairs about some modifications of that, and I think Member Sprague wants to say something, I see Member Swenson has something well-written here, that maybe reflects what happened upstairs.
I, I just want to, to help the public understand about, discussion about the cost basis, and what we're willing to, to cap the city portion.
Good.
Of using TIF funds and the federal grant at, and why we chose four million. And for me, again, the original application was for a bridge, it was costed at somewhere between three and five million, but I think four million was, was a realistic price, and the, the purpose of the rescope was to leverage the money to get more improvements done for the same cost or below. Of course, we'd like to do more for less, that's not possible, giving a more robust corridor treatment that we've chosen with this project, with this option three, but we can get more improvements and a bigger impact for that same four million dollars, so that's why for me, I'm comfortable going up to that same level that was originally contemplated with the bridge, hence the four million.
Thanks, we have, let's take the motion here, and then we can have some more discussion.
Sure. I'd like to move Resolution twenty-twelve, one oh three, approving option three in the France intersection enhancements, which are improvement number BA four oh four, with these caveats, that with a four million dollar contribution cap on city funds, which would include the TIF funds and the original federal grant, that at this time, no monuments be- that at this time, no monuments be planned unless there's alternate funding for it, that we are not planning on replacing the Whole Foods sidewalk currently that was just built, nor currently the Boulevard by, putting in a Boulevard by the Byerly's Macy's area, that we are pricing the southbound with full striping, not partial striping, that we apply for assistance from the Hennepin County Public Works and the community works for things like the trees and enhancements like that, and that we have staff have a discussion with the area landowners as to the right-of-way acquisition.
Well-stated, I think, based on the work that we've done. No further discussion? Let's have a vote. We just need a voice vote on this one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carrie. All right. Now we're going to move on to the next and last public hearing, which is an appeal of the Heritage Preservation Board's issuance of a Certificate of Appropriateness for a New Home at 4524 Bruce Avenue, which is embodied in Resolution Number 2012-104. And Joyce Repia from our staff has the staff comments, and then we'll hear from the appellant as well, I think, which was Kitty O'Day, if I recall correctly. Ms. Repia.
Mayor Hovland and members of the council, we are hearing the appeal of the Heritage Preservation's issuance of a Certificate of Appropriateness for 4524 Bruce Avenue. Thank you. The subject property is located on the west side of the 4,500 block of Bruce Avenue, and the current home is a contemporary-style home built in 1973, which is after the period of significance for the Country Club District, which was from 1924 to 1944. Properties that have homes on them that were built after that period are eligible to be removed. However, any new construction must be approved by the Heritage Preservation Board through the Certificate of Appropriateness process. And the process for a Certificate of Appropriateness is two-step. First, a preliminary plan is provided for the Heritage Preservation Board and the public to review, and a vote is not taken at that time. However, the applicant does receive input from the board and the public. At the final meeting, the plans are presented that reflect the suggestions to the plans made at the time of the preliminary review, and the Heritage Preservation Board takes action at the request of, request at that time. The Country Club District's Plan of Treatment provides guidelines for the design review of new home construction in the district. The guidelines encourage compatible design, where new construction is sensitive to the size, scale, color, and materials and character of the historic neighborhood. However, the design is not required to replicate a historic structure. This is a rendering of the preliminary plan that was reviewed, and the design is inspired by Tudor revival and English cottage architectural elements, which are closely related and defined in the 1980 Architectural Survey of the Country Club District, as including the extensive use of half-timbering, two stories and occasionally two and a half stories in height, with multiple projecting gables, projecting bays, orio windows, and occasionally tracery or diamond-shaped panes, and the use of decorative stone on the foundation and front steps. The preliminary design incorporated many of those design elements. The plan also includes utilizing hardy board stucco panels with wood trim to cover the seams in lieu of a traditional stucco product. This material has been approved through the Certificate of Appropriateness process for new homes in the Country Club District at 4601 Drexel Avenue and 4602 Bruce Avenue. Interestingly, the 1980 survey identified that of the 550 homes in the Country Club District, only 20 true Tudor-style homes were built. However, 130 English cottage-style homes with Tudor elements were identified. The Heritage Preservation Board reviewed this preliminary plan and agreed that the size, scale, and massing of the proposed home was complementary to the adjacent homes. Preservation Consultant Robert Vogel commented that the plan was consistent with the provisions for new construction in the district's Plan of Treatment. That being said, the consensus of the board was that the design was too busy, creating a home that appeared to overwhelm the adjacent homes. The following architectural design elements were identified as contributing to the busyness of the design: diamond grids on the windows, metal roofing material on the front porch, the height of the stonework along the foundation, and the wood trim on the stucco panels seemed to need, seemed busy in some areas and needed some attention. This is the final plan that was taken into consideration, knowing that the size and the scale and the mass of the home met approval of the board. Identifying those elements that had been addressed at the preliminary meeting, they removed the diamond grids on the front elevation windows, they replaced the metal roofing on the front porch with asphalt shingles, they reduced the height of the stonework along the foundation on the south elevation, and the wooden trim was redesigned. A majority of the Heritage Preservation Board voted to approve this plan, subject to the plans presented dated July 2, 2012, with the window grids shown on the front elevation continued on all elevations of the home. Any changes to their approved plan must be brought back to the Heritage Preservation Board. A sign not to exceed six square feet with a rendering of the proposed home should be displayed on the property. A year-built plaque should be displayed on the home, and the Heritage Preservation Board's staff liaison should be provided a final inspection of the home prior to the issuance of a Certificate of Occupancy. And lastly, photographs of all elevations of the new construction shall be provided once the house is completed. Findings supporting the decision included the applicant met all the procedural requirements for the replacement of a nonhistoric resource in the Country Club District. The proposed plan met the criteria set out in the Design Review Guidelines of the Country Club District's Plan of Treatment, and the proposed new house will be visually compatible with the historic period of revival-style homes. STACK recommends you uphold the decision that is subject to this appeal. And presently, Eric and Ann Wurteman at 4522 Bruce Avenue and Kitty O'Day at 4610 Bruce Avenue are here to address their appeals.
Good. Any questions for Ms. Repia? All right. I think the most recent email we had was from Kitty O'Day when she was down in Denver, but I'd forgotten that the Wurtemans had also appealed this. So, and I noticed Mr. Wurteman in the audience, and we'll let him come forward first.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members.
And give us your full name and address, please.
Eric Wurteman, 4522 Bruce Avenue. So we're the home on the north side of 4524. So my wife and I want to thank you first off for allowing us the opportunity to appeal the five to four decision by the Heritage Preservation Board. I really have three issues. The first one is not as major as the others, but the first one is really around the scale legend. The scale legend appears to be listed incorrectly in the documents presented before the Heritage Preservation Board at the June 12 and July 9 meetings. We firmly believe that this legend may have led to incorrect assumptions about the scale and proportions of multiple features of this proposed home. Secondly, more importantly, the front porch featured in the documents approved on July 9 is not compatible with the Country Club neighborhood or appropriate, or appropriate as evidenced by the lack of porches in this district, particularly among Tudor revival-style homes. Well, smaller covered entryways may appear in some cases, and some colonials may have columns, a covered porch measuring approximately 12 feet by 4 and 1/2 feet, as proposed by JMS Homes would set a new architectural precedent for the Country Club neighborhood. Kitty O'Day, who was also here, as you mentioned, Bruce Avenue neighbor, will walk through some photos. She did a lot of work on this. She attempted to present photographic images of about 100 Tudor-style homes in the Country Club neighborhood at the July 9 meeting. Due to technical difficulties, unfortunately, we were not able to get those images up. Had they been able to put up on the screen, I think the board would have seen that the Tudor-style homes in Country Club simply do not have the porch of the scale and size. In the Country Club District's Plan of Treatment, which was referenced by Joyce, under Design Review Guidelines, a section on size, scale, and massing states, "Facade should be architecturally similar to existing historic homes and visually relate to the historic facades of nearby homes. Radically contrasting facade designs will not be allowed." We believe that the proposed home does not meet these guidelines and feel strongly that because the front-facing facade is such an important part of any home in the Country Club District, particular care and attention must be given to maintaining appropriateness of design and the architectural features. And I think most people here would understand the uniqueness of that neighborhood is why a lot of people move there and why we spend the money to live there. We believe the front porch feature should be removed before a Certificate of Appropriateness is granted. Thirdly, JMS Homes has proposed the use of non-traditional exterior material, namely cement panels, which are intended to look like stucco. In the Plan of Treatment for the Country Club District in Design Review Guidelines, the section on exterior materials reads, "Traditional materials and exterior finishes," which include horizontal lap siding, stucco, brick, false half-timbering, wood shake, stone, they're all recommended for use, obviously. "The use of non-traditional materials such as hardy plank siding and steel roofing should be considered on a case-by-case basis. Immitive wood and masonry finishes should duplicate the size, shape, color, and texture of materials historically used in the district." The product proposed by JMS, painted cement panels, is not a traditional material or exterior finish, and therefore should not be approved for use on the facades visible from the street. In fact, our understanding of the product proposed is that it will not duplicate the texture of materials historically used in the district.
Okay. Mr. Wurteman, I ask you to wrap up because you're a little over your time already.
So, the main point on the stucco is that the homes around it are all stucco. It is not a traditional material. And I know both Kitty and a neighbor behind us, Mr. McCormick, will talk about that. So really what we're asking is review the architectural elevations when it gets to the scale legend. And secondly, consider approval of the Certificate of Appropriateness for the proposed home only after removal of the front porch and the inclusion of stucco versus a cement panel.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Wurteman is also entitled her own three minutes, if she...
She would love to take them, but unfortunately, she's in New Jersey.
All right, okay. All right. I couldn't tell who was back there with you, so. Ms. O'Day?
Hi, Kitty O'Day. I'm 4610 Bruce, and I did appeal the decision to approve the house at 4524. Why the appeal? And I put too many slides, so I'll zoom through this. It was a close vote. It was a majority. It was pretty darn close, five to four. There was an hour, hour and a half discussion on this house at the first meeting, and I can tell you that none of the neighbor input was put forward as changes. The stucco issue wasn't, the porch issue wasn't. My concern about the gable on the third floor was not put forward as a consideration. They did absolutely, in my opinion, the most minor changes possible. I was not able, at the second meeting, to show the HPB photos of the original Country Club District Tudor homes to help them determine appropriateness and impact. What I observed at the first meeting was a lot of confusion as to what a Tudor is. A lot of new members hadn't, wasn't really familiar with the neighborhood. And so I wasn't able to do that because of a technical issue, because we switched rooms. The new home proposed features, I'm not asking for replication of the historic homes. I'm asking for, I guess, being consistent with the elements of the homes. The proposed home includes features that are not typically found in the Country Club Tudor homes: the front porch, the open covered entry, and what I'm dubbing the floating front-facing third-floor window. It floats in the roof. It's not attached to the base of the house, it's floating in the roof. So I'm asking you to uphold the appeal, give HPB a chance to review all the information prior to making this decision. Just very quickly, here are pictures of what I defined as the Tudor homes. The 95 homes I studied were stucco, two-story, had half-timbering, and stone. And that's based on what the home being recommended is. So these are the older homes, sorry, older homes, and the middle one's the new home. Here are some homes I did not include in the comparison because either they weren't two-story, they didn't have half-timbering, they weren't stucco. So I didn't include those homes. I only included the homes that really replicated the proposed home. My two issues are the front-facing third-floor window and the porch-open portico. Here are examples of front entries of homes in the neighborhood. I've got 95 pictures. Only eight homes have a non-traditional entry. All right? Even new homes that are being built in the neighborhood, these are four new homes, are, many of them are following, these are all following the traditional entries: the stone recessed doors being flushed to the house or coming out slightly. I did find a porch, finally. There's only one out of 95 homes I studied, one porch over on Brown Dale. In the entire neighborhood, all styles of homes, there's only three. So let's look at the entryways. There are eight homes in the neighborhood that are Tudors, by my definition, that have changed their front entries. These all were changed prior to the COA process. So you can see the different things, metal, recess, round, all sorts of things. But there's only eight of them, less than 8%. All right? So that, my key thing here is that the new home with that front portico and porch, it's just a disconnect with what's in the neighborhood. Next is in terms of that front-facing gable. Here are examples of third-floor windows in the neighborhood. And what you'll see is those small little windows at the top of the, at the gables. Okay? What's being proposed is a separate gable that floats in the roof and is a much bigger functional window. What was presented to the Heritage Board on this top schematic is, if you notice the window I've circled on the upper left, shows just a single window facing the south. So that that front window really is the primary window for that space. If you really studied it and looked at the plans, there's actually a three window on the south side that can provide lots of light to that. The homes in the neighborhood with those third floors have typically, in fact, almost all of them have their primary windows for that third-floor attic space or bonus room are on the south, north, or in the back.
Ms. O'Day, I'll let you drift over a little bit again.
Let me just go just to the...
So why don't you tell us what you're looking for for relief?
So what I'm looking for is, I'd like to see this referred back to the HPB, but let them have a chance to see all the information. Let them see the photo library that I pulled together. Let them see real stucco versus the cement panels so that they can make an informed decision. There is all sorts of debate about what it was, but it was totally subjective, ambiguous. Let them look at concrete things.
Okay.
And then encourage them not to add these new elements to the neighborhood, and I'm asking that appropriate needs to be defined better. The house next to me that was built at 4608 Bruce was also defined as appropriate.
Okay.
And I think that that needs to be tightened.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there a respondent here? Or multiple respondents? It's okay to.
First, Mr. Mayor and council, let me say thank you for taking the time and for your consideration on this. My name is Matt Hanisch. I'm Vice President of Construction with JMS Custom Homes. And also present, we have, we have the Ericksons, and I have Kathy Alexander, who is the, who is the Principal of Alexander Design Group and the designer on this project. As you're aware, JMS Custom Homes has entered into an agreement with... As you're aware, JMS Custom Homes has entered into an agreement with the Ericksons to purchase and develop a project for their home at 45, or 4524 Bruce Avenue. This is a picture of the existing home. And I think Joyce did an excellent job of explaining to you the process that we went through in getting approval from the, from the Heritage Preservation Board, both meetings and also some of the concessions that we made after the first meeting in bringing our, bringing our project forward to the second meeting. This being the result of, you know, that, that input. And ultimately, we did receive a certificate of appropriateness issued on July 10th stating that, that the board had deemed it appropriate. It did not, however, indicate that there was a, an appeal period that would be taking place. So, we moved forward with the project, and I understand the Ericksons also moved forward with finding a replacement property. So, we were quite surprised when appeals were filed and we found that we did not indeed have our certificate of appropriateness. And I know that it has also caused some angst for the Ericksons as they now, their replacement home is now in jeopardy and may have to move on to a different property. There's been a lot of talk about what is a Tudor house, and I would like to point to, this is the, the report that Joyce referenced regarding the Historical and Architectural Survey of the Country Club District that was done by Heritage Preservation Associates in 1980. If you look, you can see that with regard to English Tudor, they actually stated that although the Country Club District does not contain any pure examples of English Tudor style, numerous houses were designed with, were designed with details enassing. Many of the English cottage-style houses in the district contain features of the English Tudor style. In fact, they could only find not 90 or 100 homes in the district that met Tudor styling, but really only 20 that they felt really met Tudor styling in the district. Following that, if you, you know, I guess what I'd like to say to that point is that it really indicates that there's a lot of confusion as to what is a Tudor house and really that most of the homes in the district are really not true Tudors, but are also a combination of other elements as well. Which is where we went with our design. We went with a design that was Tudor-inspired, not a true Tudor. So, if you look at some of the elements on our home, you look at the timbering, you can see some existing homes that, at various locations throughout Country Club that have as much or more timbering than we're proposing on the project that, that we've designed. Another thing you've heard is that homes in Country Club don't have front porches. These are only four examples. There's multiple examples of homes in Country Club with front porches. And in fact, the, the process of the certificate of appropriateness approval has, has gone through with five homes that have, that have had new front porches approved to them. You can see, you can see there's, the two bottom homes both have very substantial front porches on them. What else do we have? The third-story windows that Tudor-style homes or homes in the district do not have third-story windows. You can see examples here, and in fact, in the top left, you will see an example of exactly what Ms. O'Day was speaking to, of the dormer window on the front elevation. And if you look at, at many of the other homes, if you, colonial-style homes, many of them have two or three of these. If I go to, the biggest, the biggest point of contention seems to be whether or not stucco, stucco is the appropriate finish for the exterior of the home or whether alternative materials are, are appropriate. And I think you'll see that, you know, there's been two homes already approved, but the precedence has been set. Two homes have been approved through the certificate of appropriateness process that have, that have cement-board stucco panels as their exterior facade with timbering on. And both of these homes are, you know, are in-fitting with, with everything that's in the, in the development. So, I guess in closing, what I'd like to say is that, you know, JMS is, is, you know, buying homes that are, that are appropriate for redevelopment all over Edina. And in each of those cases, we, we take great, you know, a great deal of time in developing a project that not only meets the needs of, of current buyers and homeowners, but also respects the existing neighborhood, as evidenced by the home you see here at, at 4601 Drexel. That was an award-winning home constructed by JMS in the Country Club District. And this project is going to be no different. We've, we've designed a beautiful home that, that definitely complements the existing homes in Country Club, and, and I'm certain will be an asset to the community. So, what I'm asking is that, that you support the decision of the Heritage Preservation Board and, and also the recommendation of your planning staff and uphold the certificate of appropriateness that was issued on July 10th. I'd like to thank you again for your time.
Hold on, Mr. Hannich. Member Swenson.
Couple. What's Meratic Wood?
Mer, oh, Miratec?
Miratec, okay.
Miratec. Miratec is a brand name of a, of a composite trim product that's designed to be, it comes in, in long lengths. It's not free. It has a, a woodgrain texture and easily holds paint.
So, the timbered parts on this house are timbered in composite that doesn't have wood in it?
No, it is actually, it's made of wood. It's a wood product.
Ah.
But it is not, you eliminate the knots, the checking, the splintering, the cupping and curling. It's a true product that, that actually holds paint much better than wood and is more durable in the long run.
And then, do you have a board that shows what your, your color palette is or the stone that you're using? Because I've seen two colored renderings, and one has gray stone on it and one has brown stone on it, and I'm not really sure, is it stone or is it something that looks like stone? Or what is the product that you're using?
No, it is stone. And if you can, if you can give me one second, I will grab that for you.
That'd be great. Thanks. Just put it flat. Yep.
All right. This is, this is the stone that's proposed for the, for the foundation that you see on the, on two elevations of the home. It's a, it's a natural stone product. You'll see a sample here of the shingles. This is a sample of the body color of the house on the material that we will use, and also a sample of the trim boards.
So, so the stone is monochrome?
The stone is somewhat monochromatic. There is, it is a blend, so you will see some varying colors because it's a natural stone also.
But in the, in the rendering, it looks almost like it's very different throughout. So, this looks more monochromatic to me.
Yeah, and it, it varies depending on, depending on the, you know, the stone you get. I mean, that's one thing about natural stone, it's difficult to get an exact duplicate every time. I mean, if you buy stone for two houses side by side, they may not look the same in a natural stone product.
But it's not two-color, the rendering?
No, no, no. It's, it's not going to be two-color.
I appreciate that clarification. Thanks.
Yeah.
Other questions for Mr. Hannich? What about this issue that Mr. Wordleman raised about the scale? Your legend is wrong. Do we have, do we have an issue over whether or not your, your house would comply with code?
That would not create an issue. When we submitted our application for approval, we submitted a full-size set of plans to the planning, to the planning department. When they provide documents, copies of documents to the board, I assume that they reduce them for the sake of cost and also because a full-size set of plans is 24 by 36. When they reduce them, that would have, it would have the effect of reducing the size, the overall size of the entire picture, but it would not reduce the proportion to which the drawings are made. So, I guess what I'm saying is no one element gets reduced more than another, so the proportion and perspective remains the same.
So, you have a, you have a picture of the elevations of the proposed house and the two houses on either side?
Correct.
And the house to the south, its peak is at 924, and your peak is at 9269, and the neighbor to the north is at 9259. Is that still correct?
That is still correct, and that is in keeping with the guidelines set forth by the city for, for the height of the building.
Yep.
One of the issues that we ran into, actually was the house Ms. O'Day mentioned a couple of years ago that was also, I think, built by JMS, was the grade of that house, which looked a bit, I think the former house looked a bit like the Erickson's home, was built at a higher grade than the houses on each side of it. And at that time, nobody thought about the idea that the Heritage Preservation Board could say, well, take that house back to the original grade so it's at the same grade as the houses next to it. The developer, JMS, didn't think about it either. And as a consequence, you, you've got a house that meets code for the lot that it sits on, but it's, it's quite a bit higher than the house to the south, which was Ms. O'Day's and the house to the north. Do we have that kind of an issue here? Is there any kind of a grading differential between Mr. Wordleman's house, I think he said it was to the north, and, and the house to the south relative to this one that you're proposing for a teardown?
No, we do not. We have a, we have a complete grading plan, which was also part of the, part of the approval process. And I think...
I, I don't, you know, it may have been approved, and you, I'm sure you had a grading plan, but I just want to know if the grade for this property is, is the same as the grade of the houses on each side of it, and if not, why not?
If we're able to pull up a visual from, from...
That's fine.
From what Joyce set up on the screen? I can show you, we've got, we've got an elevation, and in fact, I think you held it up for me earlier.
Yeah. I just can't, without my magnifying glass, I can't tell you what the elevation is at the bottom.
This is the picture I'm looking for right here. So, if you see, if you look at, at this picture right here, this is, this is drawn to scale, and it's also drawn, you know, the, the elevations are, are also accurate as far as the, the relation to the neighboring homes. The homes on each side are only drawn as, as ghost outlines. They don't have all of the details drawn in like, like the home that we're proposing has, but it gives you an idea of the, of the scale and proportion.
Okay. Yeah. That's helpful. Member Brendel?
Thank you. Looking at this grade, there, there is, this, the grade of this new home is higher than the house on the left. Is that the current grade of the property, or is that something that is being, it's part of this project?
The current grade of the property is such that the existing home is somewhat higher.
Okay. All right. Just looking at materials, since I think that was, that for me is the most concern with regard to certificate of appropriateness, and I regard the, the Heritage Preservation Board as the experts on this. But looking at the fact that we're using composite materials, the hardy cement board for the stucco areas and the Meratic, the Meriatic, the, the Miratec, sorry, the Miratec composite trim, have those elements been approved for COA in other construction projects in the Country Club District?
They absolutely have. And the, the last two photos that I, that I had up on the screen, both homes that used, if not exact, very similar products on their exterior facades. And also, there's, there have been, there have been garages built using these products, and I believe there was even a certificate of appropriateness issued to put James Hardy lapboard siding on a colonial home in the district as well.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you very much.
Member Sprague?
What's the, the motive for using a hardy stucco as opposed to natural? And how does, how does that finish out with the seams? Talk a little bit about that.
Well, the, the motive behind using the, the hardy panels, there's multiple reasons. One, one is ease of installation, two is, is warranty. A third issue is that stucco homes, you know, built really since, since about 19, late 1980s, have a very strong stigma due to a, a large amount of litigation from, from mold and, and those types of things. Insurance companies tend to insure stucco homes that were built since then at higher rates. Relocation companies many times will not allow their clients to purchase stucco homes because of the fact that, you know, they, they then would have to buy them in a resale situation, which limits our market as far as selling a home. It's a, it's a superior product, and, you know, I have to think that, that if it were available in the 1920s and '30s, that it, it would have been used at that time as well.
And what's, what's the cost factor difference for the material itself between that and real stucco?
I would be, I would be lying if I told you I knew the answer to that. I would, I would imagine that it is somewhat less expensive. Significant, I would say, not. The, the other question you asked was about the seams, and that's the, the timbering that you see on the home is designed around the size of the panels that are available so that we've got timbering that, that covers all, you know, all of the exposed seams.
And so, what's the size of the panels approximately?
This particular product, we can get panels up to four foot by 12 foot in length.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you use, the house that JMS built back, and I think it was 2005, on Drexel and Bridge, if I recall correctly?
That's correct.
You had a photo of it. Did that use hardy plank or Miratec, or did that use stucco and wood?
That uses a cement board siding. I don't know if it was James Hardy, but it uses a cement board siding and a composite trim board, yes. Yeah, this is the home you're referring to, am I correct? 4601 Drexel?
Yeah, one on the, on the left side, 46...
Yes.
It's a, it's a nice home.
Thank you very much.
All right. Other questions for Mr. Hansel? All right. And then, this is a public hearing. Folks, I'm opening it up for testimony here and inquiry. And we have a gentleman coming forward, had his hand up before. Welcome, Hugh.
Thank you, members, and Mayor, my name is Don. I live at 4523 Casco.
Would you start over again, please? I don't think you had a good microphone there.
Sure. My name is Don McCormick. I live at 4523 Casco, so I'm behind and one over to the property that's being discussed this evening. In 2006, my wife and I purchased a home, the current home that we're living in, and as a result of the project, we needed to replace the garage. We made a proposal, including hardy board for that replacement garage, and it was rejected by the Preservation Board. I just want to make that known.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Mr. McCormick, could you come back, please, for a moment? Would you ask, would you answer the question, at least from your point of view, as to why he was, the use of hardy board was rejected for your building?
Because it was not consistent with the home itself.
All right.
And I also point out, from recollection, our garage cost us roughly $30,000 to build, and I believe it cost us $68,000 more dollars to do stucco for a traditional two-car garage.
Thanks, Mr. McCormick.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. David Goldstein. I live at 4509 Bruce Avenue. Mayor, members. My concern about this project is that, as you all know, Country Club Neighborhood is a great asset to Edina, and it's an asset that derives a large part of its value from the atmosphere of the neighborhood, from the appearance of the neighborhood and the houses. And while I was listening to the testimony regarding the France Avenue project, I was struck by Mr. Fisher's comment about urban design and the importance of tying properties together. And what, what part of the beauty of Country Club comes from having a variety of homes... angle restrictions, a whole bunch of things that the original builders put in place. And I'm very disturbed that those restrictions, which require creativity when you're remodeling, when I did my own remodel 15 years ago, we had our own difficulties and challenges. But the end result was a more beautiful product because we had to live within those constraints. And my concern is, this will now be the third JMS building, if permitted, on Bruce. I hesitate to speak this bluntly, but on behalf of my neighbors, I feel compelled to say that the two standing JMS buildings on Bruce are widely loathed by their neighbors. They are insulting and to the extent that they are widely out of scale for those lots that they sit on. The materials are inconsistent. They are very much disliked buildings. And at some point, I worry about my own property values when everyone has an incentive to have as large a building on their lot as long as they can look out on the other buildings that remain attractive. It's a real concern for me. I don't think JMS's representations during these processes before have been lived up to. I think this process should be scrutinized very carefully. I'm particularly troubled when I see beautiful drawings of this proposed house in complete isolation, as opposed to seeing a rendering on the lot, which I'm very familiar with. I walk my dog past it every day. And on that lot between the two houses that it would reside between, it strikes me as a potential disaster. So I hope this appeal will be considered very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Amy Gustafson, and I live at 4518 Bruce Avenue. And I just got in from out of town, so I apologize. I have nothing real formal, so I'm just going to kind of speak off the cuff. I did write a letter last week as I was on vacation, just because I have huge concerns as well. And I am not from this area. I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin, in an area called Whitefish Bay, Wisconsin, which is a historical neighborhood. And what JMS has done in our neighborhood would never be approved in where I grew up, Whitefish Bay, Wisconsin. These type of materials would never be allowed. And I would encourage the city of Edina to consider that in our neighborhood too, because this is a historical neighborhood that we need to keep the product of what was originally used there. Mayor, you did say that you commended JMS on their project at 4601 Drexel. I would encourage, I talked to the homeowner, and I would encourage you to maybe talk to the homeowner and ask her about how she feels about the products that have been used, because I don't want to speak for her, although she said that we could conference her in and call her. I wouldn't say that people are happy with the products JMS has used. So I too have huge concerns about these panels. And I can see them everywhere that JMS has put them. And I'm also concerned that Matt put some pictures up of things that were built in 1936, 1924. He put two homes up that are good friends of mine that were redos. So he did put houses up that were redone from its original state, which I think is just false material and really disgusting. That's all.
Thanks, Ms. Gustafson. Anyone else?
I would move to close the public hearing.
So move in second as we close the public hearing, discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anxious.
All's saying aye.
I have a question.
Carrie, now, we have a member Brindle with a question.
Thank you.
Member Bennett with a question. And others as well, I'm sure.
I just have one. And that is, was the materials board provided to Heritage Preservation Board, so they could see it?
The answer was no for anyone who couldn't hear it and couldn't see Joyce's head shake.
Okay.
Member Bennett?
Thank you. Your Honor, I have a question and answer for Ms. Repia because she and I had an email correspondence about this question. I did see the correspondence about the garage application for certificate of appropriateness and that denial. And so I asked the question, how many COA applications altogether, new homes, facade changes, new garages, et cetera, have requested the use of Hardy board, stucco panels? How many of those applications were approved? How many of those applications were denied? And Ms. Repia was kind enough to answer my inquiry. Do you, okay, here's what you said.
That's what I said.
Here's what you said. There have been a total of 11 new homes reviewed through the COA process since 2003. Of those homes, four have been on Bruce Avenue. Two of the homes were approved with the Hardy board, stucco panels, 4601 Drexel Avenue and 4602 Bruce Avenue. I do not have a recount, a record of detached garages approved with Hardy board, stucco panels. However, the HPB asks for the materials to match the home. And then last sentence, which I think was very helpful, "The HPB has not denied a COA, but several have gone back to the drawing board for redesign or been approved subject to conditions." And then you went on in other answers to tell me some of those. So sorry to get you...
Exactly.
But thank you. It was very helpful information. So in other words, 11 new homes since 2003.
Since 2003, since the district was created as a landmark district and a certificate of appropriateness process was enacted.
And only two of these have involved Hardy board, stucco panels, correct?
That is correct. And they, some of those homes didn't lend themselves to stucco either. They were a different architectural style. And now we have new setback requirements in our Country Club district. And when you have 50-foot lots, due to your tight setbacks, just about the only architectural style that will fit within your tight setback is a design that has a sloping roof with a lower eve line rather than a gable end where a colonial wouldn't be able to be built in the district today.
And that would again affect lots on Drexel East more than it would affect lots, well, lots on Wooddale West are...
Lots that are less than 75 feet in width, correct?
Right. And some of the lots even on Drexel and Casco are wider than 60 feet, if my recollection holds.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
No. Comment? Gonna save that. Do you have a question?
I have a question for you. These have come before council before. What's the standard of review of these appeals in your mind?
We've heard, I think, three in the past, and the council in the past has upheld the certificate of appropriateness decision of the Heritage Preservation Board.
That's not my question. Maybe Roger can answer this. What's the standard of review on appeal coming from the, through this process for us? What's the threshold?
I think it's de novo review.
Is it de novo review? Yeah, that's my question.
Yes.
Okay. It's de novo review, so there is no specific...
You don't have to give deference to them.
Okay. Thank you. One more question for Plana Repia. Is it standard practice for the applicant to present materials boards to your HPB?
It is provided. We give a process and a requirement checklist for our applicants, and that is included in the checklist.
But in this instance, it was not done?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Another question, Ms. Repia, for you. Based on what Mr. McCormick testified to, I'm wondering, under what circumstances in the past, non-traditional exterior materials have been considered to be appropriate? If they're available on a case-by-case basis.
Correct. And that's where the case...
They're the exception rather than the rule.
That's where the case-by-case basis comes in. So if one is asking for a new detached structure and the house has a type of material, the case-by-case would enter in as to wanting, if it's traditional stucco for the home, we would, the Heritage Preservation Board has asked that the garage too be made of the traditional stucco. So that would be one of the case-by-case bases.
All right. Thank you. Motion? Or do you want to just make a comment?
Well, I'll make a comment and we can turn it into a motion. I served on historical preservation before I came on to this council. And it was just in its starting days and ridge lines and eve lines and matching things like that. We were just starting to develop. But as part of that development, it changed as to what years houses would have to stay up and what years they could come down. It used to be you could only take down a house if it had mold in it. So there, you know, it's morphed as the years and there have been changes. I think what I really support, though, is that concept that the materials used throughout the district stay consistent. So I'm uncomfortable using Hardy board plank. I'm not quite sure about that wood, and I can't even pronounce it correctly, so I'm not going to attempt that again. And I have an issue with that entry because it really, you know, you're asking for a front yard setback change just to put on that covered porch area, it looks like to me, because the setback to the house is one thing. And it's less to the covered porch. And I don't see porches like that, except when people have redone them. And they haven't redone them really on timbered houses. And this is a timbered house. Is it a true Tudor? No, I would call it probably a Tudor cottage. But it does sort of follow a pattern of those houses in the neighborhood. And I don't support that kind of covered roof structure on it like that. I could support a shorter roof that maybe didn't have pillars that just covered the front door or recess door, which is usually what you see in that house. So I would say that I, my inclination is to approve the appeal and send it back to HPB.
Members Sprague, let's go through comments first, then we can figure out what we want to do with it.
I just, when I'm hearing an appeal, I'm trying to think of the standard of review. It's de novo. But I think when we're dealing with our historic preservation assets, we should tread carefully. And obviously, that board should always have the materials board in front of them. That's a concern. Vogel, and this is from July 9th draft minutes, said to his board, "The board needs to determine," I'm sorry, let me start again. Consultant Vogel said, "The proposed house is not a replica of an historic house. It doesn't pretend to be." He added, "That what the board needs to determine is if the proposed home is an appropriate substitute that combines old-world design with modern building practices and building codes and does no harm." Concluding, Vogel said, "If the board sees measurable harm in the design of the home, it should be denied. If not, it should be approved." So that's his standard for review, the instruction he gave his board. I guess I agree, we're not replicating homes. We do want to stay true to the old-world design, though. And I think you can do that and still combine modern building practices and building codes. And in this case, I agree with Councilmember Swenson that the design aspect needs another go-round. I concur on the front porch. The third-story window element, if you're going to allow for a bonus room in that height, you've got to have light. I understand that might be a concession to some people, but that does not bother me. The stone, multi-color did, but having seen the materials board, I understand that now, and that wouldn't bother me as well. But, so I think there's a home here that can be built, but it needs to go back. We need to tread carefully when we're approving these and make sure that we are as consistent as possible with the plan of treatment.
Thank you. Member Brindle, let's have your comments, and then Member Bennett, and then I'll give mine. We'll try to figure out what to do here.
Okay. The two elements of this design that concern me, one is, I think that the front porch is unnecessary. And looking at how this home would have been built, if it had been built in the 20s, when some of the original homes were built, you wouldn't see that, you would see the gable over the front door. So that I'm comfortable with. But the porch itself, the pillars look too modern to me. Just doesn't, it looks out of scale with what the original homes in the area would have as a front entry. And I hark back to the calendar that has Country Club front doors. And this front door would not fit in that display. And it's a marvelous display of unique front doors. And then the braces, the braces that are from the wall of the house to the eve, those look really out of place to me. They just are, they don't belong in this style. They look chalet-ish, if you will. They just don't look like they belong in this particular style. And as I looked around at homes in the area, both in the photographs that were provided as well as just kind of driving around, I might see some of these on other homes, but they aren't in this style at all. I just don't think it belongs in this style.
Member Bennett?
Thank you. At my very first council meeting in 2007, we had an appeal. And the council did uphold the decision of the HPB, modified that decision. I think here, the better thing is to send it back to the HPB with the concerns that have been identified. I did see all 100 and some homes on the slideshow. It was very helpful. This is a neighborhood that I've walked a lot. I know what it looks like, but it was helpful to have that comparison one after another. Also helpful to have the photographs in the file, those provided by JMS, those provided by the designer, all very helpful. I do note that where there is an entrance treatment, it is smaller than what is provided here, particularly in a home of this, inspired by this or referential to this. We really are not seeing front porches except that one single porch that was identified, and that's not off the front door, that's to the side of the front door. And in, especially in the photographs provided by the designer, there were a couple of new homes, homes that have been rebuilt or extensively remodeled. And in answer to questions that I posed, Ms. Repia was able to tell me that those were actually homes that went through a revision of design process before what was built. So we know that this is something that people have worked with. I was on this body when we approved the revised plan of treatment in 2008. A lot of work and thoughtfulness on the part of the Heritage Preservation Board and staff went into that. I think it's a better, more practical document than it used to be. The guidelines are there. And I think that with the materials board, with the photographs that they were not able to see because of technical difficulties and other information, that the Heritage Preservation Board, I think, will come back with a good recommendation. And there will be a home that can be built.
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues with regard to the front entry. I think that porch is just sort of floating in space. I think a covered entry would be more appropriate, consistent with Councilmember Sprague on the third-floor window. I don't think that floats. I don't agree with Ms. O'Dea on that. I think it's okay. I think the house, as Member Swenson described, is a Tudor cottage with the corbas supporting the overhang. That seems appropriate to me. But when I see the materials board, I warm right up to that natural stone, and I'm drawn to it. And maybe I'm just a sucker for natural materials. But when I see the, I see the other material, I'll call them the foam materials. You can say it's wood, but it's some sort of a composite. And that Hardy plank, I just don't trust them. I mean, people thought aluminum siding was a great idea, too. And I don't like those manufactured materials. Maybe I am too much of a purist. But I would like to send this back to the Heritage Preservation Board to review it as to the design, particularly the front entry, which I hear everybody saying on the council, and also revisit the material usage. Because I don't, I don't know if, you know, the rule is, you use traditional materials. There's a list of them. You better be able to explain why you want to use a non-traditional exterior material. And I don't think a case has frankly been made for use of a non-traditional exterior material here. If it's just a cost issue, Mr. McCormick testified that he had to do something that was consistent with his house, and it was a more expensive sort of exterior that he had to put on his garage. But I'm guessing he appreciates it a lot more for what he ended up with as a product. And I'm sure the market will reflect it if he ever wants to sell it, that it's a consistent... and I'm sure the market will reflect it if he ever wants to sell it, that it's consistent between the house and the garage. So I'm also in favor of sending it back for review as to the design, particularly the front entry and the materials.
I would just say, I'll direct this to everyone on the council. It sounds like you want to approve the appeal. It doesn't sound like, I'm not, I'm not sure what you would refer back to the H P B for additional discussion. It sounds like all the discussion on an individual basis tonight is that you want to approve the appeal. I think we also want, that's what, I'm just saying, that's what it sounds like to me. I think we also, though, want to hear from the attorney because there is, the 60-day rule is impactful on this issue as well. So the idea of referring it back to H P B and having some additional deliberation and coming back to you might not result in the end outcome that you're looking for.
Well, I think the notion of referring it back to the H P B, you know, yeah, we are granting the appeal, but I don't think we want to sit again as the arbiter of whether or not the front entry is acceptable to us. We want somebody else to deal with that issue, not us.
Can't, no. It would seem logical that if we grant the appeal, that then the builder has the choice of bringing back a different design to H P B and that either is passed or not passed. If it's passed, it still has that ability to be appealed again because everything does. So it would seem to me the cleanest thing to do is that we uphold the appeal tonight and then what happens, happens.
I would agree.
Then what I would recommend is if you're going to uphold the appeal, we need findings of fact as to the basis for that, so.
So I move to approve the appeal and direct staff to prepare findings in accordance therewith?
What, to direct preparation of finding consistent with approving the appeal, not making final action on it, just directing preparation of findings.
So I'm just moving to direct the preparation of findings.
Consistent with the pulling the appeal.
Consistent with the...
Through discussion here tonight, a pulling the appeal.
Which gives the applicant...
Your motion should also include the granting of the appeal, development of findings consistent with the grant of the appeal.
Correct. I know what you mean.
That's your motion.
So moved.
I will second it. And I did, even though I had the opportunity to comment earlier, I wanted to make sure. I do agree with Member Swenson. I understand that we probably have the biggest disagreement about the window. And it's not so much the placement of the window, because there are windows on the front facades, it's that all the windows that I saw, both in the photographs that were in the packet and on the slides, were smaller. They were windows of ornamentation, not primary, not windows that were sized equally with the other windows. And I don't know that I will persuade my colleagues of that, that in terms of findings, that was another element that I thought was awry.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second and any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carry it. That concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda. Community comment, is there anyone in the audience that desires to come forward and address the council with respect to an issue that's not on the agenda this evening?
Cheryl.
Yeah, she's here. Ms. Appeldorn, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members, Cheryl Appeldorn, 2611 Town Circle in White Oaks. I'm just speaking in reference to a letter that was in the packet. I'm one of the signers from the White Oaks neighborhood, raising our concerns about the flooding in the woodland area and Towns Road. I'm not going to go over that letter. We think we worked very hard to set out all the facts as we know them and we're just, basically, there's two points. One is the flooding has continued all summer, even with all the hot weather we've had. This past weekend, we had one rain and the trees were underwater again. And so it's a real concern, the, this letter sets out a substantial amount of private money was raised to help preserve this woodland a number of years ago and what used to be, we thought, one of the major assets of our neighborhood is, is really declined. It's pretty unattractive right now. It's, you know, it's not fun to walk by. So we're looking for your help. And I'm just here tonight, we didn't, we do not want to take a lot of time in community comment here. Obviously, we have the support of many, 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 you know, I, we could have probably tripled the number of signers on that letter, but for the sake of time, just wanted to get it to you. So we're looking for some guidance. And I think the main point is, we don't think, we've met with the city staff, they've been wonderful, they understand our concerns, but I think they perceive this in the turn, in the context of a 10-year plan of capital improvements on stormwater management, et cetera. And I think our main message to you is, we don't think that this can be dealt with in a 10-year plan because by then, we don't know what the options will be. And so we think this is a matter of some urgency. We think the efforts of the community to preserve this area deserve some respect and we hope that we can get your help, your guidance on how we should proceed. We're happy to bring our folks in to a city council meeting if that would be helpful. You can tell us what context is best for that. We're happy to continue to meet with city staff, but we need some help. We're not, we're not sure what the next step should be, except to say that we think there's, it's not something that should be addressed in, you know, a few years, 10 years. By then, the trees will be gone and I, frankly, I think by then, the problem will become extremely expensive. So, so that's our pitch. I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I would appreciate some communication back to our group on what we should do next.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
If you can hang around for a few minutes, when you go, sit back down, we're going to talk to staff about that, but we'll see if anybody else wants to come up first.
Okay, thank you.
Community comment, thanks. Anyone else for a community comment? All right, seeing no one coming forward. Director Whoel, what are our, what are our options here? It sounds like something that staff is aware of and I think we all are familiar with that lower area on Towns Road before you hit, before you hit Sunnyside Road down there. So what's, what are some of the possibilities here for us?
Mayor, council, I know this is an area that has been brought to our attention for a few years. What I'd suggest is I'd like for staff to actually prepare a report on this and come back at a near future meeting to sort out what the potential options would be.
That makes sense. It's a, it's a complex problem, I think.
It is, yep.
Straightforward sort of wetland issue, but I'm sure it has many elements of complexity to it, so getting a report, I think, could be important and sooner rather than later.
Right.
So, Member Swenson?
Do we have a contact person that we can also notify as to when that report will be presented and what the information is in it, so that it can be easily disseminated to that neighborhood?
Ms. Appeldorn has been a good liaison with the neighborhood.
Okay. So you'll stay in touch with Ms. Appeldorn?
Yes, we will, yep.
And she can broadcast to the neighborhood, I'm sure you've got an email system set up over there in your neighborhood association. Okay, good.
Jim?
I think the element of it that has greatest concern for me is probably the unintended consequence of the stormwater from Country Club and that area being funneled toward that, toward that area and gathering in that, in that space that ends up flooding the trees. And I think it was probably unintended, but is a result of, of that. And so that's what I would be looking for, where can that stormwater go from where it is, so it has a place to go.
And I think that point that Councilmember Brindle made really is the crux of the issue because it probably wasn't unintended. It was intended, but it was the best of many worse options. And I think to, to get into the complexity of it at this point is probably counterproductive for the conversation, but that's what Director Whoel is suggesting, that we prepare a report from you that looks at all of the issues that were in play at the time this decision was made. I don't think staff have disagreed with the neighborhood association that we should address the issue. It's more of a priority, you know, what priority we place on it versus what priority the neighborhood places on it. And I think they're looking for council to kind of weigh into that.
Member Bennett?
And if possible, and I hear that this will likely be included, if we can know what options have been identified so far, what further investigation remains, if any, and then sort of knowing what the plan has been and what options are available to change that, that would be very helpful.
You know, one of the things that, for many years, bothered me when I drive through that beautiful neighborhood is that, there's that beautiful marsh over to the east in the big open meadow. And then you get down in the low spot going downtown north towards Sunnyside and it's, it's pretty depressing, actually, and it could be a real natural, naturally beautiful place if we, if we get this done right and maybe this is the impetus to get it done. In addition to maybe making some structural improvements on the road, that gets the road up a little bit higher and defines that wetland a little bit more, but, you know. We'll see what happens with some expert assistance or guidance on this, but something needs to be done, so. It's time has come. All right. I think that's it for community comment and then we'll move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. And we've got two of our council members that work very, very hard at interviewing student members, Member Bennett and Member Brindle, and they've completed their work and we're going to take their recommendation here. So I don't know how you want to share this reporting out responsibility, but...
I'll start.
All right.
We interviewed 16 just wonderful young people. And they had a lot of advice for us, actually. It was very good. We learn a lot from these kids about what they can provide as far as guidance to our, to our boards and commissions and how it is that they can best serve. One example was a student who served on the planning commission last year and we put, we recommend two students for each commission. And this student wanted to continue serving on planning because of the experience she had last year where she was kind of mentored by a student who was himself on the planning commission for his second year. And so they would meet prior to each meeting, they'd go through the packet together, they'd organize their comments, and that formed just a huge recommendation for, for both Joni and me to say, you know, this, this is a great idea for planning. It's a great idea for any commission that has a lot of rigor to its, to its work. And, and so we appreciate the kids, the students coming forward willing to serve and the students willing to give us some guidance on how best they can serve us. So it was a great experience.
It was a wonderful experience. It's been very helpful the last couple of summers to have the city clerk coordinating all the interviews. Thank you. That one summer when we were setting them up ourselves, I think it stretched out over a whole month or so. And this is much more compact and productive and I know the kids, the students appreciate that sort of pre-interview as well. It's like a warm-up. I think the mentor, the idea of some overlap, I think, is a great idea that I, we both, I think, share that recommendation, that for some of the more technical boards and commissions, there be an older student and a younger student when that is possible. Also that there be encouragement of mentoring relationships and if they don't spring up, if there is no board or commission member who volunteers for that, perhaps one can be recruited by a chair. And then one other thing I think that we both heard that would be important is, just as there is community comment as part of the board and commission meetings, I think it's very important that student comments be solicited or sought actively during the course of a meeting. For some of the boards and commissions, that's happening more naturally. I think it's a function of subject matter, whoever happens to be chairing those meetings and also just the students themselves, their personalities. But on other boards and commissions, I think it's been more difficult or for other students more difficult. And if that comment can be sought out actively, make that, chairs make certain that that's included in every meeting, I think that would be helpful. But we are recommending that there not be students appointed to the Adana Housing Foundation. Their meeting schedule just doesn't fit. It's mornings during what amounts to about first hour. And they are not able to reschedule those meetings. And so the students who served this year, I think, were stalwart in their attendance of both class and meetings, but it's also a board on which there is not a lot of opportunity for active student participation. So that does reduce the number of student positions from 18 to 16, but I think that will allow students to have a more meaningful service on boards or commissions.
We actually, we actually did hear from a member of the Adana Housing Foundation who corroborated with that as well, so they agreed.
Okay, good. Why don't one of you take one of the columns and the other take the other column and make the nominations?
Okay, for Art Center Board, we are recommending Anna Elingbo, who's, will be a high school senior and served last year on Heritage Preservation Board. Also Melissa Stefanik, who is a senior and who served on the planning commission in 2010, 2011. For Energy and Environment Commission, we are recommending Andrew Brandt, who will be a high school junior, and Alana Sakal, who will be also a high school junior. For the Adana Community Health Committee, we are recommending Kyle Lindquist, who will be an E H S senior, and Helen Risser, who will be an E H S junior. And finally, from, for me, Heritage Preservation Board, we are recommending Sarah Good, an E H S junior-to-be and Nathan Johnson, also to be a junior.
All right. Member Brindle?
All right. And all of the students that I'm going to read are E H S. We did have one applicant who ended up withdrawing his application, who is a student at Blake, but, but he'll reapply next year. So these are all E H S. Human Rights and Relations Commission, Tara Motady, who will be a senior. She served on the Art Center Board in 2011-12. And Maggie Steng will be a senior and she served on the Community Health Committee in 2011-12. To the Park Board, we are recommending Yasmin Almag, a senior, and she served on the Adana Housing Foundation in 2011-12. And John O'Leary, serving for his first time as a senior. Planning Commission, Emily Cherkaski, serving, she is a senior and she will be serving her second year on the planning commission. She served there in 2011-12. She'll be joined by Ben Kilberg, who will be a junior. And Transportation Commission, Steven Schweiger, will continue on that commission for his second year, he'll be a senior. And Carolyn Sirks will be a junior.
Good. One of you could move it, one of you second.
I will make the motion.
I will second.
That's moved and seconded. We adopt the student appointments to advisory boards and commissions as recommended by Members Brindle and Bennett. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carry it. Thank you for that work on behalf of the council and our community. All right, now, next matter, Manager Neal, the proposed ordinance involving a franchise fee, potential franchise fee.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are two ordinances before the council tonight for first reading. Ordinance number 2012-15 is a franchise fee ordinance for CenterPoint Energy and ordinance number 2012-16 is a franchise fee ordinance for Xcel Energy. As you'll recall, both of these ordinances had their first discussions in a conceptual form with the council back in February of this year at your retreat. There was an interest in identifying a reliable new revenue source to, that we could count on for the purpose of improving, expanding our network of non-motorized transportation, which in, I think, civilian terms means sidewalks, bike trails, anything that we can use to improve those facilities in the community. Both because they become problematic when we're in a special assessment hearing, but also because I think the council had expressed on many different occasions, support for expanding the network into areas where you think it ought to be and it currently doesn't exist. And to do that, so far, our only tools have been to fund those projects out of our C I P or to fund them as special assessment projects, which is very difficult from a political standpoint. standpoint and a community relations standpoint as well. The city currently does not charge franchise fees, or does not have a franchise fee for the electric and gas utilities in the city. We are one of the cities in the Twin Cities, one of the few cities in the Twin Cities that does not employ this as a, as a revenue source. My proposal to you is to implement the franchise fees and to dedicate them for this very specific purpose. On June 5th, we came together to talk about this in a little more detail, and at that point, you suggested that we add lighting to that discussion, and also striping and other sorts of, of on-the-road costs that would be consistent with the overall mission of providing non-motorized transportation systems, improving those and expanding those. So that, I have, I've created that into these ordinances. These particular ordinances have been prepared by our city attorney based on similar documents that were just prepared by the City of Eden Prairie. They are pretty standard documents. Our, the, the proposed rates that we are charging will generate on an annual basis a little over 1.1 million dollars. Both of the rate structures have been reviewed with both utilities. They don't, they, they don't necessarily support them, they don't really necessarily object to them either. In the market area of franchise fees, our franchise fees are quite modest compared to most cities in the Twin Cities. They're about, in fact, our rates are exactly about half of what Eden Prairie just, just imposed about a month ago. So this is the proposal that's in front of you tonight. There is a statutory waiting period of sixty days between the first reading and the second reading in this case to provide for some consultation with the utility, which is different than in most cases, in most ordinances that are before you. So my recommendation to you is to approve these on first reading. I will then make the official contact with representatives from both utilities and see if they have any concerns, objections, if there are any franchise issues that we need to discuss. Our franchise with Excel Energy expires in 2015, so it has a couple of years left. Our franchise with CenterPoint Energy was new in, I think, 2005, so it has quite a few years left on it. But I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. Nice presentation. Questions for Manager Neal or comments? Members Sprague?
I have both. First of all, going back to the original discussion at the retreat, we, one thing we talked about specifically related to this was, was, because we were also talking about special assessment policy review and revision, is we wanted to offer another offset to adjacent homeowners going through the special assessment process. This will take a cost center out of these road reconstruction projects. The second thing was, factor, is that we already lack enough MINDOT state aid funds just to keep up with road resurfacing. We end up rededicating a lot of these to pedestrian improvements, and by enacting a franchise fee, it will allow us a separate dedicated funding stream that will free up our state aid money to, to complete our road reconstruction in a more comprehensive manner. So that's, those are two very important points for me. My question is, what's the timeframe for development of supportive policies for this franchise fee, specifically a policy that spells out the technical specifications for the type of facilities that would qualify under the plan? And secondly, the policy that spells out the prioritization process that will happen so that we can prioritize the missing links and so on out there in a, in intelligent manner?
Councilmember Sprague and, and, and council, the, the timeframe for putting together the supportive policies for, for the, the new funding stream, I would tell you, we will have before you, before you consider the second reading of the ordinance, for sure. I had envisioned a, a process where, that involves the ETC having a, an annual review of, of the use of these funds, having a review and comments, a type of review, that then comes to council and is ultimately approved. That's, that's, just in, in large, in the big picture, that's how I would view that, that part of our organization having a major role in, in how we prioritize the, the spending of these dollars.
And that, so similar to how the Park Board makes review and comment on CIP improvements?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, Member Brindle, and then Member Swenson.
Thank you. Thanks, I have a couple. The franchise fee that we're talking about would create, if we go through with this, would create the Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Fund. That's our aim for it?
I had, I had to call it something.
Yeah, well, that's good. I like that. And it is, the burden is on the entire community, overall community, and I think that's appropriate. Our sidewalks, our lighting, our bike lanes benefit the entire community, so it kind of spreads the burden appropriately. You mentioned the contract with Excel expiring in 2015, and that the contract with CenterPoint is relatively new. How long is the contract period?
Typically, a franchise period is in the twenty-year frame.
Okay, that's my question.
All right. Member, Ms. Swenson, next.
The one other part I think I want to see coming forward before we vote on the second time is potentially a hierarchy of projects. You know, do we, and I'm not suggesting a hierarchy, I'm just giving you an example, you know, that new road projects coming up for the year, if they have sidewalk or lighting in them, might be funded before, a missing link might be funded, might be, you know, I, and I'm not sure, but I'm just, I would feel really comfortable if we had that also because then their use would be pre-designated, so to speak.
Member Bennett?
I support. I support the questions that have been asked about policy. I think it'll be very helpful to have those in front of us before we're looking at finalizing this, and also, I very much like the idea of a hierarchy of projects, so we have a roadmap to, as we're moving forward. I share the recollection of my colleagues about the, our initial discussions of this. We are trying to diminish or decrease that burden of the costs of street reconstruction, and we've looked at our model, that they're essential public projects, they do need to be funded, it is burdensome for property owners, and as much as we can move things into the utility funding, which we have done with curb and gutter and other things that handle stormwater, as well as the water main projects and the sanitary sewer, so that's one offset or one policy change that the city made in the mid-2000s. I think this is fair and reasonable, not only from that perspective, removing some of the burden on adjacent property owners, but also because of the nature of the facilities. Every, everybody in the community at one point or another uses the roadways, has a roadway in front of their property and will use those roadways, whether as a motorist, a bicyclist, a pedestrian. However, even though most of us in the community will use the sidewalks, and many of us will use bike lanes, we don't all have them in front of our house. And so in terms of payment into a shared system, we're all paying into that shared roadway system, we're not all necessarily paying into that sidewalk or bike lane system, and we've heard, I think, in, in specific projects from people who see the unfairness of that, that they're paying for something that others are going to use, and this way we'll be allocating those costs among all of our residents, property owners, and even non-property tax-paying entities, and so I think that's a very fair direction to be going, and I appreciate the work that's gone into this.
Other comments? Members Sprague?
I hate to bring up minutia about the name, but since I was discussing this with Member Bennett earlier, Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Fund, I know the acronyms is, you know, makes a acronym that you can say easily, but we talked about Bike Walk Edina at some point. Cyclist doesn't get a lot of use in connection with, we were just talking about biking, so what about something, an alternative like Bike Walk Edina Safety Fund, or some other moniker? Maybe we can talk about that down the road?
That would be great.
Okay.
I'll bring you some options.
Yeah, the branding of it would be important.
It is, it is.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to have first reading for ordinance. Do you want them separate?
You can do them together.
Twenty, 2012-15 and 2012-16.
Their second?
Second.
Further discussion or comment? I would join my colleagues in, in just reaffirming all the work that's gone into this, all the thought that we've given it. All of us have been sitting through these road reconstruction projects, and that's, causes enough anxiety over special assessments, and then when you get to the sidewalk portion in the neighborhood where we know we need to build out these systems, there's just an inherent resistance, not only in the residents that are going to be specially assessed for the street work, but also in the council itself, even though we know we need to build out this system. And when you, when you look at some of the national, national data that applies to our region as well, the millennials that are coming with Member Sprague and behind Member Sprague, they want to be able to get around on foot or by bicycle. They don't want to own two cars if they can avoid it, and you can see the proliferation of building that's happened in the, kind of the east side of town, where people are doing, engage in turn-on activity, remodeling activity, because those are locations where there are sidewalks and connectivity. They can get to 50th and France, they can get to 44th and France, and I think the, the general notion of making our town one of the most walkable, or the most walkable towns in the metro will, will prove to be of great value to the, the value of our, our properties and, and the properties of our residents. Already in, in Member Sprague's business, part of a listing is the walkability index, and if we can improve the walkability index for, for people in our town, we're going to enhance the value of their properties. We're going to do it at a very modest cost for folks of, what is it, $2.95 a month? And so, $2.90?
Well, in Hennepin County, just was in the paper this last week as developing a walking plan for the county, as a new initiative they have, and I thought that that really went hand in hand with what we want to do with this.
So this, this will give us a lot more latitude in trying to figure out a, a system for our town that will really work and, and develop it over time so that everybody can move around safely in our system, and I like the idea of having a better branding than what we've, we've got for first reading, but I support this wholeheartedly as well, along with my colleagues. All right, let's have a vote on adopting for first reading purposes ordinance number 2012-15 and 2012-16. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carrie? All right, next we're on to the special assessment policy revision discussion. Manager Neal, you have this matter as well.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is also a matter that had its origination at the council's retreat in February, and had another review by the council on June 5th, when we had the opportunity to have Rusty Fifell from Northland Securities work with our staff, and, and as you recall, we reviewed a number of different models for how we wanted, for, for how we could have assessed previous, the previous year's projects in different special assessment formulas. What I have attached to this is the, is the current structure of the special assessment policy, which was adopted by the council on September 7th, 2010. The format of this, I, I hope you were able to discern, is that the italicized language is addition or new, strikeout language is obviously current and, and proposed to be It, it does accomplish a number of goals that the council had, had asked staff to incorporate into the new policy. One was to extend the repayment period for, for special assessments from ten to fifteen years. The council's discussion on this at the June 5th meeting was also around the idea of, could we have a different threshold for when fifteen years was put into effect? Our city assessor had some discussion with the county assessor, and the reply was, no, it could not. So on a project, on any single project, the assessment period can't vary from homeowner to homeowner, from property owner to property owner. It all has to be ten, or it all has to be fifteen. So, so we can, we can still do either one of those. Number two is, is to restructure the, the payments from a declining principal formula to level payments throughout the, throughout the, the term of the repayment period, whatever it is. Number three was to decrease the spread between what we borrowed money at and, and how we mark it up for the, for the construction financing. That spread is currently 2%, and what we looked at in the model that, that I recall appeared to appeal most to the council is to reduce that spread to 1%. I had number four was to exclude the sidewalk, trail, and lighting costs from the project, and to create a, the new revenue source from utility franchise fees. And number five was to take a look at what we could do to replace, or reduce, or change the way that we spread the, the burden of replacing the underground utilities, and specifically, we were getting a lot of, of input, council members were in particular from the Richmond Hills neighborhood, about how we could do that differently, and we, we took a look at the potential impacts of, of the city just assuming all of those costs, and they were really substantial in terms of what we would need to increase our utility rates in order to take that on, that additional burden on, was, was going to be in the neighborhood of a 50% increase in our rates. So we have not, we could, if that was still important to the council, or if you wanted to have more discussion on that, we could have more discussion on that, but that one we did not incorporate into the proposed revisions. What we're looking at here by implementing proposed policy changes of, of just changing the repayment period, changing the, changing the interest rate spread, and changing the, the way that we structure our payments, really can make a substantial difference for property owners who are getting a special assessment. In the scenario we looked at, reducing, or just making those three changes, reduce the impact on someone with a $10,000 special assessment from a, a payment of, of $1,375 a year to $868 per year, which could be a substantial change in affordability for someone with that level of assessment. That is kind of a, the, the brief overview of the changes that are incorporated into this policy. We had not, or I did not recommend that this policy be effective on, on a retroactive basis, so we have time to take a look at this, and if you have additional consideration that you want to give us, or insight you want to, to give us, we're ready to take that.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
Based on your timeline of if it were passed, when it would go into effect, I take it that the streets under construction this year would benefit from this change, but anyone who's coming before us this fall for an assessment hearing would not, correct? So if their project was done the previous summer?
Final levy.
Final levy, thank you. That's correct. From what I, is that correct from what I read?
Yeah, I'm looking at Director Cool, and I, I want to make, I want to make sure that, you, you're probably the best person to answer that question as this is written. What, how did we finally structure that?
For, for what was written, for final assessment hearings after January 1st, 2013, so after this Jan, coming January, so that would be all the projects that were reconstructed this summer. The ones that were done in, in 2011 wouldn't, wouldn't follow the policy, just like Councilmember Swenson had stated.
Okay.
So the, the next question is why? Why can't, why, why can't we just adopt this policy and apply it to anybody who's coming in for a final assessment?
Could I address that?
Please.
Good evening, council. I'm here in council. Last year, for, for the projects... Last year for, for the projects that are being assessed this fall, the council sold a bond issue, adopted resolution two thousand and eleven dash ninety-five, which lists the projects specifically, on the first page, on page fifteen, it lists that the, the projects are to be a ten-year period and carry an, an interest rate of four point one percent. So the bond covenant that we issued to pay for those, for the, for the projects to be assessed this fall states that, that those two things would be in place.
Thanks, John.
Good. Thank you, John. Number Sprague.
Thank you. Manager Neil, concurrent with review of this policy, are, is staff going to review the other supportive assessment policy, specifically the storm and sewer utility policy? And the reason why we want to review that is if we're, if we're going to be creating living streets and doing bio-swell activity and basically biofiltration, storm sewer infrastructure at the street level, wouldn't that be something that would be included in the storm and utility fund? That's the first question. The second one is regarding our school REU policy. It's come up a number of times and do we want to revisit that in conjunction with this entire theme of revisiting special assessment policy?
Councilmember Sprague and council, the question about how we, do we want to, how we want to describe taking that particular cost out of the project, we should probably, we could still handle that in, in this policy by simply adding, adding it, well, let's see here. I, I understand what your, your question is, are we going to redo that other policy? We just really haven't had discussion about, about that.
What do we?
I under, we've had discussion about whether that should be a cost incorporated or not incorporated into the special assessment formula?
Well, it, it makes sense as we're studying these, both the franchise fee, which will take an offset, the current special assessment policy, and then going into living streets, this other biofiltration at the street, that we should assign it to the proper category. And this would be the time to, to have that thinking on it.
And, and I think we could do that by including it as a, as a specific mention in number one of this policy of allocated costs, costs that we're going to allocate to another fund.
Okay. And then, and then just revisiting the school REU, it's come up and I think we just need to have a policy conversation about that as a group at some point. And then, in terms of the, it says here in the staff report in lieu of the proposal to share the burden of the sanitary sewer laterals, staff has proposed the inclusion of underground utilities into the proposed policy revision with a repayment period proposed of fifteen years. So that would be for if they have to replace water or sanitary sewer from the house to the right-of-way, we would organize that process and then assess that as an add-on to those who choose to participate? Is that correct?
That's what I'm anticipating, Director Hul. Is that how you understand that as well?
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Okay. And so I think what we need to do is be very clear to those participants as to when, after what date, we will have the final bid, so that they can then decide, do we want to take the city bid or do we want to go out and try to organize it ourselves? Because that came up this year, we all, we all know about the, the issue. And if it's spelled out clearly what the drop dead date is for that final bid, then we can avoid it in the future.
Agree.
I guess that is, that is a question. Do we, does the sequencing work out so that the bid can be obtained and known before homeowners have to make that decision? I know that we have set a timeline in past where people have to have work done by a certain time so that the street reconstruction can start and plumbing trucks aren't in the way. I think that's probably one of the reasons why that occurs. So does this permit, does, does the framework or the schedule that we need to follow, does it permit that kind of informed decision-making? Because I think that really would benefit everyone.
Councilmember Brennall, council, we have to make it work. This Wednesday night, we have our first informational meeting for our, our projects for two thousand and thirteen, with the exception of the one that we have SEH doing. So we've, this is the earliest we've ever started our informational meeting. So we, we, our goal is to get the bids very early, like in February, so that people know what the, what the costs are actually, so that they can then go out to plumbers or whatever and compare the, the costs against an actual bid.
Number, oh, go ahead, finish.
A few, just a couple of other questions. Member Sprague raised the question regarding bio swells and other stormwater management features. Boulevards, boulevard plantings, also curb ramps, are those covered by whether it's the pedestrian and cyclist safety fund or the Bike Walk Edina safety fund or whatever we end up calling it? Would those be in that category?
I would include them in that.
Okay, so we'll, language change to specify that. I also support looking at the REU formula for schools and other occupied buildings that are not residential, where we are institutional, commercial, gathering places, so that the formula that's applied is fair to the adjacent single unit property owners. And then looking at the last page where we, it changes bade on the maximum repayment period. So the maximum repayment period is fifteen years and ten years is crossed out. Project by project, will that be a choice or will the term be fifteen years unless people prepay going forward?
Well, they always have the option to prepay.
Yes, yes.
Right. But the term, what we're proposing with this is to, to, to structure the financing as a fifteen-year term.
Okay, so no, no.
But that's, that's open to your input.
I think we discussed a sort of neighborhood election process as part of the survey that's done and going with the majority. I understand it can't be done differently within a project. But I also see, Manager Neil, excellent report. I, I noted that not only was there a lower annual payment with the fifteen years, but that also the total repayment with other changes being made was actually going to be almost a thousand dollars less with the revisions than it would be under our current policy.
The, the only drawback is that you're going to have a longer assessment hangover for that neighborhood, so that when people are looking to buy those properties, they'll see that additional cost. However, the standard practice is to request the seller to pay all liens and that's considered one of the liens. And that's usually what happens.
Member Brennall.
I just have one question, because most of you have covered what I had marked here. But our double triple A credit rating, by extending our debt, is that affected? Does that affect our double triple A? Because I, I want to protect that.
First question. First question. I don't, I don't believe that, that it would have much of an effect. It may have somewhat of effect as, as a city gets more debt with possible projects coming up, this does extend that amount of debt and it also extends the amount of debt that is not paid within ten years. The rating agencies look at not only the amount of debt, but the amount of debt that's being paid over, over a ten-year period is, is very important to them and is typically listed on, on the, the rating agencies' report as to the amount of debt being, being paid within, within a ten-year period. But I don't, I don't think, in, in my thinking, this, this would not come to that by itself. If you, if you look at potential 50th and France debt, Grandview debt, those kinds of things, it could eventually get there, but even, even that, I don't, I don't think it would amount to, to, enough to, to put us over the top.
I would agree with, with Director Wall. There are bigger threats to our triple A bond rating than what we're discussing tonight.
I guess I, with that then, what, what I'd like to see, and you can tell me if this is doable or reasonable, and that is that there's a fifteen-year payback period, but a ten-year schedule could also be provided. So if someone wants to see what ten years looks like, then they, they could just make their payments in that schedule and shorten our debt a little bit, even though overall it would be a fifteen-year period for everybody, and I understand that. I guess the, the other, the flip side of it is maybe we have a, we have a two-step approach that projects that the assessment amount is, I'll throw it out, eight thousand dollars or less would be ten years, eight thousand dollars or, or over eight thousand dollars would be fifteen years. So then at least we'd have a chance of collecting as much as possible within ten years as a protection.
Councilmember Brennall and, and councilmembers, we gave some consideration to just that very idea of having a, a threshold somewhere where we went from ten to fifteen. And, and while that could be constructive, the problems with, with that, with a threshold are, you know, the preliminary assessment versus the final assessment and the idea that we want to be able, one of the, one of the, one of the bits of feedback we got back when we studied our communications efforts is that we need to be pretty specific and very clear about what is this going to cost? And if something is right at the threshold and we projected it lower and it came in higher and we changed the deal, there's that concern about how, how that could happen to somebody. It probably wouldn't happen very often, certainly depending on where you set the threshold, but it could be a, it could be an issue that we face.
I think anytime you go to a tiered system like that, then you're also running the risk of, as we've just seen in discussions at Greater MSP about Eden Prairie, because there are 2,500 people more than we are. The cost to belong to Greater MSP is double. They happen to be over 50,000 people. Well, you'll have the same thing happen here. You set an arbitrary number at eight thousand, $10,000. Someone's not going to be happy about that, either on one side of it or the other. So I think having a fixed policy is the best thing to do. Number Swenson and number Sprague.
One comment. I do remember Rusty Feifeld, when asked about triple A bond rating, didn't seem to think that that was an issue. And I think we were relying on his professional opinion on that. Two, what I saw happen this winter where we failed was when we were confusing to our residents as to what was happening or what the cost was. And I would propose that it just be all fifteen years and we don't have a neighborhood vote. I would, I guess I thought about the advantage of that and then I thought, no, it's confusing and we're pitting neighbor against neighbor, which, and inviting dissension, which really isn't what we want. It's hard enough to go through a neighborhood road reconstruction with the dust and the mess and the noise. So I guess I would say that it's fifteen years and that's what we're doing. And, and I think your rationale for why we wouldn't do it differently at eight or ten also holds for why we would keep it the same, because we want what they're going to pay as clear as possible from the beginning, so there's no confusion and they don't feel like we promised one thing and delivered something else.
And as pointed out, those who can prepay sooner have that.
Absolutely, and they often do.
Right, they do in fact, and they have the option of doing so with this as well.
Right.
Number Sprague.
Throughout this review process, what we've come back to as a body is that we are unique in assessing a hundred percent assessments. And what that allows us to do is to have a very competitive property tax rate in the region, which, which as I'm, I'm learning in real estate, is pushing people towards our borders. So I think we all want.
Into our borders.
Into our borders, into our borders, yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
Into our district. And I think we, we want to retain that competitive advantage, but also, we also want diverse revenue streams. We want to share the, and allocate the burden as much as we can. And so if we're going to retain this one hundred percent policy, it would make sense that we would allow for a longer term for our residents. It's, it's unique, our policy is unique and our repayment term will thereby be unique and will be the least onerous for the people that choose to opt in to paying it through special assessments.
Thank you. For the comments?
Oh, oh, well, I, am I to understand that this is going to undergo some revision and come back?
Well, that was my, going to be my question to you. We, you've asked me tonight to add in stormwater treatment, stormwater management improvements into the allocated cost section of number one, we'll do that. You have, but the other part of it you've asked is to, that you are interested in taking a look at the, how this policy impacts schools and, and other large occupied lots? Is that what you said?
Can that be a separate item though? Because can't we support this and then, because really the question was, can we look at how we assess REUs? Which I see that this is separate from that. So I'd like to support this individually. And whether we do it now or after you make the change for how we pay for bio swells and things like that, I, I'm, I'm fine supporting this and then you can add the bio swells if you want and we'll vote on it that way.
Vote on the amended.
My point was to revisit any other supportive assessment policy now, this year, while we're going through this process of review. So we end up with a holistic set of policies going forward.
There, there is a, a timeliness factor here in that we're, we're looking at something that, that Director Hul is about ready to, could, if we were ready, could bring it out. I don't know if, if, if the school issue is applicable on the projects that you've got for next year.
Tracy. And I think what we encountered again last year, thinking, remembering, is that there is more language about allocation of REUs in the municipal state aid.
You're right.
Policy, street policy than there is in this. And I think it's important to have them be consistent, because there are, there will be projects where the streets, particularly side streets, will be local streets. They won't be municipal aid streets, but they may be adjacent. So I think those policies be consistent. I think boulevards, boulevard treatments other than bio swells and curb ramps was another question for one. And then with seven, and sorry, I was just getting to the proofreading stuff and didn't want to leave that. On seven, there are several items that are, are two that are eliminated, but their numbers remain in the queue.
We renumber them.
Okay. So, so those numbers get eliminated. And then with part B, so A is the list, the list of numbers, in B then those would have to be made consistent as well, the renumbering.
Yep.
And finally, in D, there's a redundant property, all property owners of properties. So we probably want to go with owners of properties.
We do.
And that's it.
Can I, taking the numbering and taking out the extra property word, can I make a motion that we approve this special assessment policy revision?
Is there a second?
Second, is this second reading or first?
No, this is not subject to.
It's not in order, so it's not subject to.
Oh, it isn't? Okay, then I'll second it. Okay?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what, what, your motion is to?
Approve what we have in front of us, changing the numbering and the.
Subject to the addition of surface stormwater management in section one.
Then I, the, the motion is just to approve this. There will be a second request then to come back with the addition of paying for stormwater. But I'd like to get this passed so that.
Mr. Hul has it available.
Director Hul has it available to him for any open houses.
All right. Do we have a second?
I, you have a second? That's fine.
And further discussion?
Yes, so then when would the revised policy be coming back to us?
Are the proposed amendments to this policy?
Yes, just in section one on the, on the stormwater management.
First meeting in September.
Okay.
Okay. And, and again, not to keep hammering this, but we do need, who's, how curb ramps, for instance, are going to be paid for, I think, is something that we do need to address, the things that are curb ramps.
The ADA compliant ramps.
Exactly.
Is that a curb or is that part of the offset in the franchise utility fee fund?
And also for, for facilities next to the sidewalk, for boulevards, bio swells is a stormwater management issue, but if there are other features in the boulevard, how are those covered? And otherwise, are we, do we have everything, sidewalks, trails, lighting?
Landscaping would, would be in the project cost, especially assessed, unless it were intended to manage stormwater, is, is how I would understand it. A bio swell has a specific function.
Right.
For stormwater management, but. For stormwater management, but.
You could just, you could just refer to living streets on that, though. If there's a solid living streets policy, and there will be.
I don't know. I think I like the approach that Members Sprig and Member Bennett are taking, and that is asking Manager Neal to look at these different areas and come back with a recommended, amended special assessment policy.
Living streets might be a policy of what we put in a street, but this policy is how we pay for what we've put in that street.
True.
So maybe they might be a little bit separate. I like your idea of the living streets, but maybe we could handle them separately.
I like, I really appreciate the specificity that's already in this, and I think we're just talking, we're talking about a little more, but is it going to make it, there is going to be utility in it, it's not just words. And one example would be the crossings, the pedestrian crossings in the Country Club neighborhood. How would they be handled under this policy? Would they be paid for out of a citywide franchise fee or would they be part of the assessable costs of the road reconstruction with the special brick pavers that were used for those crosswalks?
That was back to. That was back to my comment about supportive policies for the franchise utility fund.
Right, right.
We have to have the criteria in place so that we know which basket to drop these, these things in clearly, otherwise we get back into a confusion aspect. So I would rely on staff to go back and start having these discussions so that we come up with a clear cohesive set of policies in the future. And for tonight, I could, I could live with getting, yeah, give you what you need to move forward and then let's keep, keep working on it.
And then what I hear Member Brindel saying is, take a look at the living streets policy to see if there's anything in there that should be rolled into here.
Right, right.
From a specificity standpoint.
Mm-hmm.
All right, other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay, carried.
And next is the proposed residential curbside recycling contract. Solvay Wilmot has this matter. From a staff standpoint.
This evening, this information is a follow-up to our June nineteenth council meeting in which this subject was tabled or delayed so that we could bring further information to you on it. This is in regard to our recycling pickup for the residents, and it's a curbside pickup. We developed a RFP, or a Request for Proposal. Developing that, we received input from the Recycling and Solid Waste Work Group and the Energy and Environment Commission. Staff also had input, and once we brought a consultant onboard, they also had input on the RFP. The RFP was produced and brought to the council on March twentieth. Council reviewed it, approved it, and authorized its release. The RFP included the residential curbside collection, so that's approximately fourteen thousand households that it serves. We asked for revenue share from the proposers in our RFP. We did ask for options for collection, two-sort, which is our current system, in our little recycling bin, weekly collection with that, and/or single-sort they could propose, which we allowed them to present how they might suggest single-sort would be collected weekly or every other week. The RFP also included best value analysis, which was a request from the Energy and Environment Commission to have consideration, and council approved. So it wouldn't just be based on the lowest rate, but it would have a value for the environment proponent of it, economics, education, and qualifications, and their percentages are presented, forty percent for environment economics, fifteen for education, and five for the qualifications. We received four proposals, I'm sorry, not four proposals, we had four companies propose, some of them did have alternate proposals, Allied Waste Systems, Randy Environmental, Tennis Sanitation, and Waste Management. All of the proposals only presented a single-sort collection program, none of them presented any dual-sort consideration, so we were not able to do any kind of analysis for a two-sort or dual-sort program. The review process, we had kind of a two-part process to it. The environment, education, and qualification section were analyzed by staff, which was a group comprised of myself, Sherry Ingleman, the Community Health Administrator, and Lieutenant Michael Nibby. We based our analysis on questions that were included in the RFP, and the questions were developed by the Energy and Environment Commission and the Recycling and Solid Waste Work Group of the Energy and Environment Commission. Environmental scorings then were based on the ability for the companies to be able to collect what we required of them and if they had any additional materials. What kind of residual? Residual would be the refuse or materials that they would not consider recyclable. So how much residual do they receive in their recycling? Can be kind of a value then to determine how well the education's going on for the recycling program. We also validated if they had alternative fuels, what they had for pollution emissions to reduce greenhouse gas impacts, what kind of efficiencies they had in their facilities and their processing, where the markets were. The Energy and Environment Commission had a desire to focus more on local or domestic and not so much international, so we took a look at that, and their green and sustainable initiatives. In the education section, what they had presented in their packets for public education and awareness, the increased tonnage, how they might go about improving our program, and also how they would keep the materials more recyclable and less residual, so improve quality of the material. And then, of course, qualifications. We want to make sure that they did have the ability to provide the service. Did they, not just curbside, but also for customer service? If there were calls, how would their company manage those calls? The capacity at their facilities, if they could handle our, our collection program, and then also if they had references. The second part of the review process was handled on the economic side, and that was handled by our, our consultant, Dan Crivett, from the FOTH Infrastructure and Environment. He's our senior project manager. He did the economic analysis, and then he took our information from, the staff's information from the other three categories and compiled the best value ranking for us. As a result, the outcome from the first round of it came in with Allied as the best value ranking, and they came in with a total of eighty-six points to that, and Waste Management was a second. In this, it's important to note that the best value, Allied was not at that point, the best economic point getter. Waste Management was during this. With this, we came to council, we received approval to go ahead to enter negotiations with Allied Waste to achieve, hopefully, the best economic value also in this process. We did go through that process, and in addition, we found that Waste Management had actually given us an alternate formula for calculating how they would do revenue share with us. The outcome of that then resulted in the rankings improving. Allied absolutely came in with the best economic points, and because they did come in with negotiated fee on their processing fee for the recyclables and Waste Management's, then after we had captured their alternate formula, reduced their economic points. So the total value then came in with Allied at ninety-nine points and Waste Management at seventy-eight. Now, to help define the, the rates that came into the proposals, and we're looking at the two top ranks here out of the four companies that came in. The original proposals that came in, Allied Waste's per household cost, so the cost that it is for each time they stop at a home to pick up the recycling, came in at the rates showed here, from two-forty up to two-eighty-four over a seven-year contract period. Waste Management's had a higher per household stop rate on their initial proposal and any future discussions. We didn't really open this up for discussion with them, but two-fifty-six to three-oh-six. This does not include the revenue share, it just shows the per household cost. These are actual costs that we would be responsible to pay back for, to the company for recycling collection program. We factored then those costs to the households, which we have approximately fourteen thousand households. Annually, the costs are shown, over seven years, approximately three million, three million one for Allied Waste and three million five for Waste Management's proposal, and then again, this does not include revenue share. Now we can start talking about revenue share, and this is where the processing fees come in. When we receive materials, there is a cost for them to sort and distribute, to sort the materials and then sell those materials and then the revenue that comes back. Allied Waste came in with a flat rate of seventy-five dollars per ton for processing those materials. Waste Management had escalating rate, starts at fifty-two and goes up to sixty-two-eleven. The revenue share is based on recyclable commodities that are collected at the curb and then processed and sold. So there are some variables to this, the market prices that they get for the materials or the commodities, what indices do they use to calculate that? Do they use market indices on the high side or the low side when it published the first of the month or the end of the month? The volumes that are collected, how much the citizens put out and has collected, the processing cost, which is presented by the companies, and then the formula that was used for the revenue share. So the, these things are important to take note of because it is a variable and it would not present a consistent number throughout the years that we would be receiving. So therefore, when we did, when FOTH did the analysis, he did come in with just a flat rate number for a hundred dollars per ton of revenue share that would come in, just so that we could have a way to analyze this. In the RFP, we did ask for the revenue share to be based on the total commodities, less the processing cost, and then whatever percentage of that revenue that would be shared with us. Waste Management, though, submitted an alternate formula, which was only eighty percent of the total revenue value, then take off the processing cost, and that would be a revenue share. The difference of that is shown here, what happens. An example, say we get fifty thousand dollars of revenue for the month and they collect four hundred tons of material. An Allied who followed the proposal's request, we would get fifty, the fifty thousand dollars is available, but less the processing cost, so seventy-four dollars per ton times four hundred, it's twenty-nine thousand dollars approximately with a twenty thousand dollar revenue in the end. However, Waste Management, when you apply their formula, the total commodity value goes down to forty thousand dollars off the top, and then you take the processing cost, even though it's less than Allied proposed, but because we have less revenue to base off of, to start with, we would have a lower revenue share. This was a formula that was caught, and then after we entered into negotiations and reviewed all the proposals, as we're reapplying the new processing fee that was presented through negotiation, we captured that Waste Management actually had a different formula for their revenue share. The outcomes of the, the final outcomes from the contract discussions results in an annual average, and this does include the revenue share, so this aren't actual, they could have a fluctuating rate, but an average annual of approximately three hundred and twenty-six thousand for recycling collection, and that is including our revenue share, taken off of that, or two million, two-point-two million for seven-year total. When we divide that number out, per month, per household, it comes out to approximately one dollar and ninety-one cents for Allied Waste, and then Waste Management's came in at two-point-seventeen. There is a benefit with also Allied Waste, they are a current contract holder, so they would be able to implement the contract earlier. We would, we are looking to launch this if approved, starting September, with information to the citizens and October first start date. With that brings a benefit to us of a cost savings because we would be able to implement the current, their proposed contract immediately, which brings our current household cost down. They would start at two dollars and forty cents per household. We are currently paying two dollars and eighty-one cent per household stop. Our revenue share is only at sixty percent, they're willing to increase that to a hundred percent. And then our processing fee that we're currently paying is ninety-five dollars per ton down. We would be able to go down to seventy-four dollars per ton. So the comparison is presented before you of a savings of over five thousand dollars potentially with this, implement this system early. I do have a note there that the dollar value is shown per household stop. We are currently a dual-sort, which is a weekly collection, and we would be shifting to single-sort, which is every other week collection. While we negotiated with Allied, we were able to also clarify that we want, that we would receive high-sight indices for the revenue share, that the low indices wouldn't be what they would base their payments on us, or back to us. They did add also scholarships to, for the Edina High School. They have, in current years, offered two five-hundred-dollar scholarships in their proposal. They were silent in that matter, and through negotiation, they added two more, or total of four, high school scholarships into their proposal packets, so that we would be forwarding that on to the high school for scholarships. And then, of course, there is a cost for mailing, and they would take that burden on. We've included it currently in our utility bill. We would still be able to do that on our own, but they're adding an additional publication, so that's a savings for the city of approximately five thousand dollars. The outcome then, after all of the negotiations and the review process, is that Allied Waste came in with our best environmental score, they've come in with the best education score, qualifications, and also now the best economic score. So as a result, it's easy to consider Allied Waste for the recycling contract and to continue on, since now we're able to say that not only are they a best value package, but they give us the best economic. We do have representatives from Allied here and also FOTH, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Member Bennett.
I, thanks for the presentation, very clear, very informative. I do have a question about one of the provisions in the contract, and that is seven. The materials are not numbered, so I can't give you a page number, but it is item seven, the collection requirements. Point of collection, and it states that most residential recycling collection will occur at the same location from where the regular refuse is collected, generally the street, curbside, or alley. Carts shall be placed with the handle toward the house and lid opening toward the street or alley. This is, I think, going to be an issue for people on narrow lots with single, with driveways, and especially people who have organics collection, and also those who have their trash collected at a location other than the street or alley, because of course our code used to specify that everyone had to have their trash collected from the street or alley, and that change was made before I came onto the council. But our code does still give customers the option of having their refuse collected from containers placed for collection at locations on the property other than at the curb, and that has to be without extra charge to the customer. So how are these provisions going to read together? And for those in our community who have those narrow lots with narrow driveways, where is this cart supposed to be placed so that it can be placed in the proper way apparently to be handled mechanically, which the current are not?
First off, for the alternate collection location, we do allow currently for citizens that are unable to get the materials to the curb, alternate collection location, and that will continue forward. There would be availability for people to continue to have garage site services, that is what they need for their recycling collection. The current location for recycling is curbside, so I do not foresee that having the single-stream container also located down at the curb to be any challenge for them if they already do that. already do that. The, the, the footprint of the bin is similar to the footprint of, of the cart, so again, as far as space and location, it should be either down at the curb or down by the boulevard or?
I'll be really personal. We have a single width driveway. We also have a sidewalk that has a stub that comes out to the sink, to the street. Our organics bin sits in the stub sidewalk. Our recycling bin currently sits on our boulevard grass. In the winter, we climb on top of the snowbank. Now, this past winter, it wasn't an issue, but last year, it was like climbing a mountain to wedge that bin onto the snowbank so it could be picked up. And then we have our driveway. It, where am I going to be, where am I going to need to place my recycling bin so that it could be picked up? Because it's either going to block my driveway, it, there's no room for it on the stub sidewalk because my organics bin is already there, and if there's a snowbank, I could put the green bin on top of the snowbank, but I'm not sure how I'm going to be able to get this cart on top of the snowbank, and I'm not sure that that's what's contemplated anyway. And I'm just, I'm one of a number of lot homeowners with a similar lot configuration. So what am I supposed to do in the winter?
I, I think your concern is valid, but it is a new mechanism, and I do hope that the citizens would be able to figure out that accommodations would be needed if they need to make extra shoveling space to be able to accommodate it to the side of their driveway so that they can be collected up at the curb, just as the, the bin has already been collected at the curb.
Well, again, and I, I appreciate your making the distinction for residents who having their recycling picked up for reasons of disability or whatever, but there also are customers in the city who's, are, continue to have their refuse, their trash hauled from the house as well. So not everyone is placing a cart on the street. And I'm sorry to keep laboring this point, but I've actually had a call, one of the, I've had a call from one of the haulers who's, who's had calls from their customers, and they're very concerned about the size of this bin and how this bin is going to be able to be accommodated. Again, the green bin has some flexibility. I understand that this is what we're moving to. I know that other communities are moving to it as well, but there is a configuration issue. And I, for instance, again, to return to my example, I can place my recycling bin in my sidewalk, but I'm not sure that's what you want because the handle's not facing the street. If I pa- place it at the foot of my driveway, then I don't have driveway access until that recycling has been picked up, and sometimes that's at seven o'clock in the morning and sometimes it's three o'clock in the afternoon. So I think it, I think it is an issue, and I think that, and given that we want people to store their snow on their property, the idea of shoveling to make room for another bin, I don't think is really very practical. I'm already taking my driveway snow on my, and my sidewalk snow on my property. I don't know where I'm going to put my boulevard snow.
Can't you, can't you stack the containers, one behind the other? Or do you block the sidewalk then?
Well, I can put them both, they'll, they'll probably end up coming onto the public sidewalk, which I'm trying not to do. And also then the handle's not facing the street because I have to choose which handle is facing the street. Is it the organics bin or is it the recycling bin?
Well, the handle doesn't face the street.
Uh, this says that it does.
No, it says the handle faces the house.
Oh, sorry, the opening faces the street, okay.
I had to read it twice because it didn't make sense to me.
I, I would think in practical terms, you'd stack it, one behind the other. Yeah, you're going to block the sidewalk for collection day every two weeks, but what else can you do? You can't load that thing on the snowbank, like you said. There's only one way to do it. You'd stack them one behind the other. It's an imperfect world, but I don't know where else, there's no other storage space available, but to your point.
Right. And then the other issue that people have raised is where they're going to put the bin during the weeks that the stuff is accumulating. And I do understand from the contract that people can, that although there's a standard size bin that will be provided, people will have the option of changing out.
Correct, right.
Okay, and how will they do that? What do they need to do to do that?
Well, for the initial rollout, we do ask that they would continue to use a container. We're rolling out at a sixty-five gallon size, which is the midsize. There's a thirty-five gallon size, and then there's a ninety-five gallon. It may be rather quickly that people recognize that they're going to need a larger bin, but if they get the sixty-five and think they need a smaller bin, we are asking them to wait a thirty day period, just to see and get used to it, to see what kind of materials and how quickly it does fill up or not. But we are most willing to accommodate a change out. A call would be made directly to Allied Waste Systems, and then they would make arrangements to change out the bin.
Well, I appreciate your patience. I encourage you and Allied to do a careful job of resident information on this, and I would encourage you also to anticipate that there will be some issues with people who are going to face some configuration problems.
No, I appreciate that. And, and your concern about what they do with it after collection too, is definitely something that we recognize is, is potential challenge for people, especially if they have a single car garage. Our code does allow for them to provide screening outside of the garage if they do choose to store it outside of their garage, so maybe a little bit of a fencing that covers it to keep it from being in view from the street in front of the house would be an option. Depends on the lot and how they can manage it.
Yeah.
Just to follow up on that point, the thirty-five gallon container does have a smaller footprint, does it not? I know they're all upright, but I believe.
It's a little bit smaller.
It's a little bit smaller. I'm looking at a picture on Google right now, and it looks like it's a little bit smaller, so to accommodate someone who has a space challenge, that might be the way to go.
Member Bendel.
So, in your presentation, would you please go back to the page that says for the monthly rate is a dollar ninety-one? Or is it a weekly rate, a monthly rate? I forget.
The average monthly rate?
The average monthly rate, okay. So now, let's go to the next slide. And cost savings, current contract per household is two eighty-one, down to two forty with new contract. How do we get to two forty from a dollar ninety-one?
The dollar ninety-one factors in the revenue share. The actual cost that we're responsible for is two forty. So the, the rate that we know we have to pay is two forty per household. That can come down if we receive materials that have revenue to them and we apply that cost.
Okay, so the dollar ninety-one is after the revenue share.
That is.
So that's, that's the net.
That's correct.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Other questions, comments? Do we have a motion regarding this matter?
So move.
Second.
Moved in second, and we adopt the recommended provider for the residential curbside recycling contract with, as Allied Waste Systems. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carrie.
Thanks, Owee, for sticking around.
You had no choice.
Next is request for purchase, Wooddale Avenue Intersection Improvements, Director Hul.
Mayor and members of the council, tonight we have a request for purchase for some intersection improvements along Wooddale Avenue. If you recall, earlier on in the, the agenda, we have, we, we actually awarded the bid for the, the Bike Boulevard project. During that public hearing, you requested us to look at bump outs along Wooddale Avenue. So we looked at the bump outs at, at the public hearing. I didn't think they were that expensive, but when we actually did an estimate and bid them out, they are very expensive to, to put in bump outs along Wooddale Avenue. The beauty of it is, is that there's actually twelve intersections that we would be placing these bump outs, and they would occur on the east side to kind of protect the, the parking lanes so that we wouldn't have bike riders and such going the wrong way in the bike lanes that are in the parking bays. And the actual bump out would be around the, the corner of the intersection, and in, in a lot of cases, about half of the, the bump outs, we were able to, to accommodate like a bioswale or a rain garden in these, these areas, because typically you would have a catch basin on the corner, so we were able to, to integrate that into a, to a rain garden. The bids that we had, we had two bids for this project, and the, the low bid was two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred and two dollars. My recommendation is that, one is based off of that we do not have a funding source. Our stormwater fund is, is, cannot sustain this, this, these dollar amounts this year. Without a funding source identified, I'd recommend that we deny or reject the, these two bids. And then we look at this at a later date to, to, to see if we want to incorporate this into, into that corridor. What we can do is kind of handle these potentially with some striping, and more enhanced striping at the corners, and possibly even some pavement markings that would be kind of innovative that to, so that we can, can try to redirect the cyclist to use the advisory bike lanes. The other item that I, that I think that we have to really pursue hard is that, once we stripe the advisory bike lanes and that, that if our law enforcement folks see people, either from, from kids all the way up to adults, is to help educate them as far as the right directions to go and travel, yeah, with their device goes up and down the roadway.
Member Sprague and then Member Bennett.
You can go first if you want.
Well, it occurs, there's kind of a couple of issues. It's cyclists traveling the wrong way. It's also pedestrians using what we heard people say, it's, why do you need bike lanes? There's already a bike lane on Wooddale. And so it's a, that, the nature of what it is, is I think really completely misunderstood by some. And I think there is an ordinance that says when there is a sidewalk present, it is actually a violation to walk in the street. So there's, I think pedestrian education that's essential. There is bicyclist education that's essential, rollerbladers in that lane. It's sort of serving right now at certain times of day as a two-way recreational lane.
Right.
And so I think it is going to be challenging. The bump outs were a great solution, I think, in terms of the bioswales, the edge, the, the aesthetics as well as the function, the stormwater, and then also delineating, making it clear that it was a parking lane. But I also see that it's a really high price tag.
Member Sprague.
Thank you. Do you have any diagrams of what the striping would look like? Or could you do one?
Actually, what we would do, Councilmember Sprague, is that we would take the outer curb line of what we have right, right today, and, and the pedestrian ramp varies a little bit of what we're showing here, and we would, we would stripe it around the corner, and then with the taper, and then, and then put, just put some crosshatching on it.
Okay. And then what about, was it looked at to do these not at every intersection, but maybe at two or three key locations?
We haven't.
Like Fifty-Eighth, Fifty-Fourth, Wooddale, I mean, Bellevue.
We, we haven't separated those out, but it's, it's around, what is it, twenty-two thousand dollars per intersection to do these, about eleven thousand on piece.
So it's not cheap either way?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I make a motion to reject this bid?
Second. Discussion?
Yes.
Member Bendel.
I like this project.
I like this project, and it has, it addresses a number of things, including bioswales, that themselves can be beautification. So I'm wondering, since we have a recommendation coming before us at our next meeting as to how to allocate the surplus that we're fortunate to have, could we apply some of the surplus to this project?
Councilmember Bendel, I, I'm going to refer that to Manager Neal to answer.
Refer back to us.
Is that, is that like passing the buck? Is that what we're going to call that?
I don't control those recommendations.
I thought you were going to refer back to us.
Well, I think it'll come back to you.
We certainly could. We have, as you recall, a surplus from two thousand and eleven of one point six million. It's been my, it's my hope to make that recommendation on the allocation of that to you tonight. We didn't quite have enough time to kind of fully vet out that recommendation, but if that is something you wish to do, we can include that in the recommendation. It really is more a discussion, probably for councilmembers of, of the, the question of the value, you know? How much do you feel like this project is worth that much money or not? But if, but we haven't allocated that money yet, so we could include it if, if you feel it's worth the money.
Well, if, if Manager Hul, Director Hul thinks that we can get better bids on this, that, you know, that's, that's one thing, but I, I guess I'd entertain using part of the surplus for it, because I do think it's a good project.
I, that's a lot.
Member Sprague, you had the initial idea here.
It's a lot of money for, for not a lot, it's not a lot of bang for the buck. Yes, I would like to do bioswales at every corner and every part of the Bike Boulevard, but you can stripe it, it'll, the function, the functional issue was what, why it was really brought up with discouraging people, pedestrians, from entering it and making sure that it's clear on how to use the facility. So I would go back to that original rationale and, and not do it as an add at this point, because it's pretty cost prohibitive. I think we could get more, squeeze more out of those allocations to other, other needs. We have lots of needs and lots of projects.
All right, just that it is.
All right, we've got, we had a little good discussion there. All those in favor of the motion has stated rejecting the bids on item eight F, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie. And then finally, we've got our resolution we see every couple of weeks with donations to the City of Edina, Resolution two thousand and twelve dash ninety-seven, we have a motion to approve.
So move.
Got a mo- motion in the second to approve the Resolution two thousand and twelve dash ninety-seven, accepting donations on behalf of the City of Edina. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carrie. Donations this reporting period are to the Edina Arts Center, Edina Communication and Technology Department, Edina Engineering Department, and the Edina Fire Department, Edina Park Department, Edina Police Department. One donation from the Crime Fund for Night to Unite, which is tomorrow night. And then a nice gift from, out of the Bloomington Public Health for video counting system for bike and pedestrians and cars, thirty-three hundred dollars to the, as I said, to the engineering department. Member Bennett.
I have one question, and I note that the generous gift to the Edina Park Department from the Community Foundation for Greenhouse Lighting at Arneson Acres Park, and I was wondering, is that a gift from the Community Foundation itself, or is that a gift through the Community Foundation from the Garden Council or some other group in our community?
I, I would think that it's a gift from the United Community Foundation, but the origin of the funds was probably the Garden Council.
Sure. And, and I think we had, there had been a matter in the past when that had come up, and it's, I think, always helpful to note the source, the original source of the funds, just depending on what effort has gone to raise those, it's nice to recognize the original donors as well as the Community Foundation.
All right. Mayor, I have a question as well for Director Hul on the video counting system. When, when would that go into operation?
Councilmember Sprague, we're hoping in the next few weeks is that we'll be able to obtain that equipment, and, and then operation probably end of August, early September. The beauty of it is that the cities of Richfield and Bloomington are also accepting the same video counting system, so we'll have three to share between the, the three cities.
And so that, that's something that you'll probably use quickly on Seventieth Street before the season ends to try to get an accurate count.
Well, wherever there's pedestrians and, and cyclists, is that what, what our intent is, is to use it for that. We also can use it for intersection analysis.
Okay.
Instead of placing people out on the intersection to count cars, that we can put the video cameras in the key locations and then go back to the office and fast forward and count, count the cars.
That's great. What a great innovation, and what a great gift. Thank you.
All right. We don't have any, well, let's move on to mayor and council comments. Member Bendel.
All right, thank you. On Saturday, I had occasion to spend some time in the Harriet Park neighborhood, and I actually was door knocking on behalf of some of the state and US candidates that are running for reelection, and I actually hadn't spent that much time, four hours, in that area. I cannot believe the amount of construction. Every block, there's got to be three or four construction projects that are major, major. I mean, tear downs, major remodels, and, you know, this, this group.
I mean, tear downs, major remodels, and, you know, this, this group sees projects when a variance is needed. We don't see every project. So to have that just kind of laying in front of you for you to see as you're walking around and talking to neighbors is, is really something. One of the concerns brought up to me during my walk by, by a couple of people is the loss of mature trees. The loss of mature trees because the tree is in the way of the new construction, or the loss of mature trees because the construction disturbs a mature tree. In one case, the roots of, of a mature maple tree were trimmed to within a foot of the tree itself. So the fate of that tree, we'll just have to see if it survives. The lots aren't big, so I totally understand that, you know, something has to give, but at the same time, it, it makes me, makes me hark back to a meeting I was at, a workshop that was put on by the Alliance for Sustainable Communities, and I spent some time in the tree workshop, and what cities are doing to preserve mature trees. City of Minnetonka has a tree ordinance. I'm sure other cities have tree ordinances. We took a shot at one. We've got ordinance 830, which gives some guidelines, but it doesn't protect our trees, I don't think. It allows for replacement of trees. But, but I think, looking at a mature tree, it, it is part of why people value Edina, because of our mature trees. And so it, while that tree is on one person's property, it really benefits many properties. So I think it, it really, it really needs some, some looking at and, and how we can best protect the trees that we have in our community that, that could be saved with some modification of a construction project, be it residential or commercial. So I'll throw that out there. Another item, as many of you know, I teach French horn. One of my students lives on Normandale Road between 66th and 70th Street, and I visited with, with the parent, and this is a northbound one-way street with a shoulder striped on each side. And they bike, when they come home, they, when they come home from Roslin Park, they come up 66th Street, they're going west on 66th, and then they turn south on the northbound street to get home. So I'm wondering, because they don't want to cross to the other side and come all the way back around either. So I'm wondering, how can we make that safe? Because that's, right now, it's not safe. A, there's no bike lane marked. It's two shoulders on either side of the one-lane street. So could we take those shoulders, make them bike lanes, and stripe one going north and stripe one, or I mean, mark it going north and mark it going south? They are narrow shoulders, but, but it is at least a, a line that, that says cars stay out of this space. So, but it, I don't know. I, I think it's, I think it's a problem that, that we need to take a look at. There are a lot of kids on that block, between, around that, on that stretch, and they have, they have deep front yards typically, so, and I don't know what that has to do with anything, but, but anyway, I'm just wondering how to make it safe to go south on a north, northbound runway, one-way. All right. My last thing is, on the south side of Fairview Southdale Hospital, there is a small parking lot at the entrance to the radiation unit, and when you are coming out of that parking lot, if you want to, turning onto 65th Street, there is a transit shelter right there that keeps you from being able to see clearly when you want to come out of that, and I think it's a left turn. If you want to make a left turn onto 65th from there, that transit shelter keeps you from seeing clearly, so oncoming, oncoming traffic. How, I have no idea what the possibilities are, that that transit shelter can move down 500 feet or, or some, some distance that would provide better visibility. It's a challenge because that's a tiny parking lot, and the patients going in for radiation are very passionate about, about each other, and so they want to get out of that parking place as quickly as they can so the next person can get in. So they, they want to see, see what can be done about moving that transit shelter. So that, those are my things.
All right, good. Thank you. Member Bennett.
I think just one thing, and that is that I want to express thanks to people who've worked so hard on this France Avenue project. Back in 2007, a bridge at one location did seem like a really good idea, and we've just, we've learned a lot about how people move around and where the different crossing points were, and it was a lot of work to get the funding in the first place and a lot of work to get that scope change. Many, many thanks to the mayor and to Jennifer Janovi from the Transportation Commission, who serves on the Transportation Advisory Board. All of your efforts at the T.A.
Yeah, thanks.
Paid off. I know Manager Neal worked very hard on this as well, and so we were able to preserve, I'm sorry?
And Manager.
Yes, and Director Houle. Yes. A lot, a lot of effort, team effort, went into that, and the grant was able to be preserved and redirected to something that I think really is going to serve the residents and visitors to this community much better than the original design was, and will beautify the street as well. I think it's going to be a really good project, thanks to the people who turned up for the stakeholders meetings and offered their thoughts, and then also to the ETC, which met twice during the summer, normally a vacation month for a special meeting and a subsequent regular meeting, and really worked on those numbers to bring us a proposal that we could fine-tune this evening, and I, I'm really proud of the work that everyone has done on this and grateful for it.
Thank you very much.
Good, good, but I do remember. It's 11:07, so I'm going to just wait and pass on mine, since I'm already 14 minutes past my projected bet that we would finish at 11:15. And let, Josh.
I'll take, I know, I know we talked about a couple of these over the phone, so one is in the Planning Commission notes from July 11th. Director Houle, you, you had a discussion with the Planning Commission on, on water management off of these tear down and remodels, and as I understand it, the code does not allow them to create new water flow pathways, but if they increase the rate or the volume of flow and utilize the same natural path, there's no violation of any, anything out there.
We interpret the state statute.
And that's where some of the issues are, well, now we have a difference of opinion up here, and Kerry Teague's not here to clarify this for us, because as we were talking over the phone, Member Swenson thought that.
Well, I spent 18 years between here and Planning Commission. I was hearing that you couldn't put more water on somebody's property than existed today. Now, obviously, that might be hard to measure, but that is the assumption I've had for 18 years. So if it is that you can't create new pathways, but you can add more water to old pathways, then I'm sort of surprised.
Any clarification on that?
You can write a whole text on the subject.
No. Well, I'm already passed by 11:30. So go ahead.
I should, I should never expect a simple answer from a lawyer.
I'm sorry. There is no, when it comes to water, there is no simple answer.
Okay.
But you start with the idea that water is a natural enemy, and then after that, you spend all your time refuting that it really isn't. If that makes sense. I mean, you can discharge it from your water, you can, from your property, you can't direct it, but if it's a natural flow and a natural drainage way, you can, it can leave your property.
And if you increase the rate of flow, there's no zoning control that you can implement to try to mitigate that impact?
You can try, but with great difficulty.
Has, has any community you've, you've worked in?
I've, I've heard it's struggled with many places.
Okay. All right.
With tear downs, you can say, you can't increase the amount. Well, if the footprint is not increased, you probably aren't increasing the amount of runoff.
No, but what tear down do we have where the footprint isn't increased?
And then where are you directing it? Are you directing it off into the public system, in the street, for example?
Houle said in the, in the, in the minutes, measures can be implemented, lot coverage requirements, placement of gutters, downspouts, use of previous materials, rain barrels, et cetera.
Yep. And, and you know, as far as the, the amount of flow, I mean, you can't, I mean, if you have a, a surface that's, that's directing flow, that's, that's today's directing flow onto another property, you can't control the, the volume of that, because you, we, none of us can control the flow of volume, because we get different volumes on every storm.
Right.
So it's, so it's how you, like, like Attorney Constance said, it's how you direct, if you're redirecting a, a single point, that, that's where the, really, I believe the law comes into as far as water flows onto one property to the other.
How this relates is somebody from Dever Drive contacted me or us or something a while back and was saying that a house had been, I think it was a tear down, and obviously they maxed out the building mass, and now they're having water issues because there's more volume, regardless of which storm. On average, they're creating more stormwater runoff. So how do you, how do you mitigate that in the building permit process? I don't know if this is a rhetorical question or not, and it sounds like people get very frustrated trying to figure it out, but I guess maybe have another staff discussion and see if anything comes out of it. The, in the Transportation Commission minutes, they talked about doing an inventory of right-of-ways on undeveloped land. Is that something that could be completed as part of the living streets process? Director Houle?
I'll have to, I'll have to look at that and get back to you.
Okay. The right-of-ways on undeveloped land, remember when we got the request to vacate the right-of-way down?
Oh, yeah.
So how many of those exist, and could those be leveraged for pedestrian cut-throughs? That, that was where the discussion was going.
Oh, yeah.
So as a part of living streets, we want to identify the inventory of those and see if we can put them to use. That was the question. On the bike striping plan, one thing I, I did not bring up that I'd like to have looked at, and I'd love to get the feedback from my colleagues, is the crosswalk at, well, the lack of crosswalk at 70th and Antrim. We're bringing in these, these very nice bike facilities, and there's no crosswalk there. I figured that out jogging the other day, and it seems like that would be an appropriate place. You've got the residential, there's multifamily and single family on that side, and then you've got the commercial node across the street, and then Cahill is this nice walking corridor down in Lewis Park. And I'm talking, you know the intersection I'm talking about?
70th and Antrim, though, is not.
I'm sorry, 70th and Cahill.
Cahill, okay, okay.
Thank you. Thank you for looking confused, so I can clarify myself. 70th and Cahill. So add that to your list if you could, just to, to maybe, it might be an appropriate time to consider a crosswalk there. I saw, I'm, I'm.
The crosswalk there is actually in an odd spot. It's like 100 yards north of the intersection to get across the street north and south.
Right, there's not, and I think.
Odd spot, it's, there's nothing there, really.
Maybe there should be something striped there to get people across. That's what came to mind. I saw in this construction bulletin that you got some praise for your stormwater, I'm sorry, your water treatment plant built in the garage, and I just wanted to acknowledge that on the public record, that we appreciate the innovation and the recognition for your department on that. Way to go. White Oaks has been taken care of. Good job. Did you negotiate the recycling contract?
No, that was handled mostly through Solvay and Sherry.
Okay, so, wow, way to go. I'm really impressed. I would like them to consider negotiating my home sale when it comes down. I mean, they did a really good job. I thought we ended up with some great ancillary benefits. I love the fact that they got more scholarship money for the high school kids. Household cost is down and services are up. I just think that that whole process ended up in a really excellent service and value for the public, so I just want to commend the entire department, but not you, because you didn't do the negotiation. Okay. And then, oh, I already, I already said the video counting of pedestrian and bike, that's really exciting. I think that, that will fit into our, what we're doing with these complete streets very well, as we can measure before and after and see how, how this, building out this infrastructure really, will, really creates interest in these facilities and gets the activity levels up, and people will really start to use these facilities, and we can actually show a measured increase in biking and walking as a result of this, these infrastructure projects. I think it's important to bring that metric back to the public. That's all I got. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. Stopped in at the Family Olympics on Saturday over at Bretisson Park. Had a pretty good turnout. There were about 100 folks over there with kids, and they had a lot of different stations where people were doing things. It was, it was fun to see. So I was off to a dinner, but I wanted to stop there first, and Heather Hain Anderson and other folks were doing a very nice job. And then on the 25th, I want to commend my colleagues, Mary Brindle and Josh Sprague, for being such great flash mob dancers.
Ah, yeah.
Especially Josh, his enthusiasm knows no bounds, and he's very talented. He's a good dancer. They, he needed more, he needed more film time, I thought.
I definitely do.
More for Josh, less for me. I could see I was a reluctant participant. But I think, I think the Blue Cross Blue Shield people seemed to be pleased with it, and.
But Mayor, you brought that repertoire of dance moves from your interactions with the, the Dootown guy.
Right, yep.
Who taught you all these, I mean, you had a pretty large, you know, it didn't stop. It was canoeing and rub the towel from the shower, and I mean, I couldn't believe how many moves you came out with. I was impressed.
And the other thing I wanted to say was, I went to a great transportation exhibit in Paris, if you think that's an appropriate sort of thing to do in Paris, but it was quite a, quite an exhibition of the history of transportation in Paris, and.
He's got five days in Paris, and what does he do? He goes to a transportation exhibit.
Well, one of the, one of the key things I learned there was, and it was a good way to express it, words are always important. They've made a, a real strong effort to make transportation part of living and not part of effort. And so that's a good thing to keep in mind, is, is we're working on all these things that involve connectivity, whether we're moving in a non-motorized or motorized way to make sure that transportation is just part of the way life is lived and not part of an effort. So that's it for me. I'm going to go, Neil.
Let's see, Your Honor, I have just a couple of things I'll update you on. Director Houle and I met with our contacts at Metro Transit, I think, last week, I think it was last week, where we got it, we received an update from them on the status of their negotiations with Southdale. They told us they, or Simon Property, they told us they were almost completed, they have, they needed a bit of information from us, but we got to, to take a peek at the, the exterior design of the proposed transit center, and it looks really good. I think you're going to like it. Item number two, there's a park board retreat coming up next week. I know park board members are looking forward to that. We are collecting items for the agenda for the joint meeting with the school district on the 21st, so if you have items that you want to kind of get on that agenda, get them to me soon so I can get them on there. Looking forward to Bill Nuenendorf starting, our new economic development manager. I think he's going to be a good fit for Edina. He starts August 27th. And finally, one guy is starting and another guy is leaving. Tom Jensen has given us his notice that he is retiring as our, our fire marshal. He's retiring August 31st after 31 years of, of time, faithful employment with the City of Edina. So Tom is, I know a lot of you probably all know Tom. Tom is a.
Every time you had a volunteer project, you had to have Tom come look in your wire room.
Yeah.
You had to be on the good side of Tom, let me tell you.
And he, he had a big good side. Tom, Tom was a.
He always wanted to get there early so you didn't muck up.
Yeah. He, he, Tom is a great guy and a very, very good fire marshal, so we're going to miss him. That's all I have.
A quick comment on the school.
A quick comment on the school board agenda, I don't know if the rest of the council knows this, but did you know that the area where they're proposing the Southdale Apartments and the Byerly site are both within the Edina School District?
No.
I didn't either, and someone brought that to my attention, they, they, looking at the capacity of Cornelia School, which would be pulling in that, that elementary school population, I think we should bring it to their attention, and they might want to consider, we all might want to consider, we're making that decision, how that will impact the school there, because I, I thought that was Richfield School District, but there's a little carve-out that covers both of those projects, and we're talking about hundreds of units between the two, so.
As to the Southdale units, as I've talked with Lori Van Dalen about the design, they're, they tend to be high-end luxury in that, in that Southdale section, so I, I do question whether there'd be a lot of families in there, but I, I don't think there'll be a lot of families living in a commercial district.
But think about the, for instance, I can think about one new immigrant population, the East Asian, East Indian population, they, they will start at, at some of the apartment buildings, as they, they, I mean, they're working for, you know, they're working for, and as they move up the scale, they could, they could, they and many other groups might move into those apartments as the next part up the scale, and, you know, who knows, it could be just about anybody with a, with a, even one child, and then you multiply that by a few units, and you have a load for the school district that may be unanticipated, or-
Well, part of our discussion that night, we, we already think is going to be a general discussion of, of development capacities and where we see things growing, so this is, that's a perfect fit for that.
Okay.
If I may. Members Sprague, I think you're, I think you're correct, and I observed that, that there are actually a lot of families living in the southeast area in apartments, and I think that, that will continue with the transit, the, the access to downtown, but then also the features in the area, recreational, it's very convenient living for people, particularly when they're perhaps here for four, five, six years without an intention to stay, they don't want to become homeowners. And returning just to that issue you raised earlier, we do have an ordinance about water, and this is what it says, drainage, surface water runoff shall be properly channeled into storm sewers, water courses, ponding areas, or other public facilities. All provisions for drainage, including storm sewers, sheet drainages, and swales, shall be reviewed and approved by the engineer prior to construction or installation. So our code seems to contemplate that it's going to be directed into a public facility, not a neighbor's yard.
But you said, you said, read the first part again.
That surface water runoff shall be properly channeled into storm sewers, water courses, ponding areas, or other public facilities.
But water course through a yard, I mean, it goes through the yard to the water course, which it would happen like on Dever Drive, they increase the water flow, more goes over the neighbor's yard, eventually it ends up in Minnehawke Creek, but we still have the intervening parcel issue. It's going to cross someone else's land to get to the final destination, so question still exists.
Well, maybe recodification will give us a definition of water course.
All right, anything else?
Any other?
Concerns, pearls of wisdom? All right. You stand adjourned.
Are you going to Park Lawn?